Good evening, everyone. This study session of the Board of Education for November 10th, 2014 is called to order, and I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to all of our television viewers. While our study sessions are generally limited to our receipt of information from staff and discussion of that information, review of resolutions prior to a vote, at times we conduct votes during study sessions, as we will tonight. Any item that has been voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting was televised and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PBS TV services website. So I'd like to start out this evening with a rousing thank you to the voters of Portland for the passage of our levy by 70 percent. Thank you. This is great news for us. It adds 40 or more teachers to our classrooms next fall when we start receiving that money from property taxes. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and do public comment, Ms. Hewson. I know we have many people signed up.
Six.
Okay.
Eight quarters.
So, well, those two are coming up. I'll go ahead and run through the instructions for public comment for everybody else who's speaking tonight. "Thank you for taking the time to attend the meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts and reflections and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on your comments." And the board will not respond to any comments or questions during public comment time, but we've asked the board manager, Roseanne Pell, to follow up on issues raised during public testimony. Roseanne is available right here in the front of the room and sometimes is wandering around in the back. We also ask -- well, she, you know, she's trying to find people all the time. It's purposefully wandering, that's right, not just wandering. We also ask that if you have written materials you'd like us to review, that you give them to Ms. Hewson unless they have charts or graphs or something that you're going to be referring to during your discussion, and then we'll go ahead and have those here just so we can keep all the information available to us. Guidelines for public comment emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. You have a total of three minutes. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name. During the first two minutes, you'll see a green light in front of you. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, the red light will come on and a buzzer will sound, and we ask that you please wrap up your comments at that particular time. And we sincerely appreciate your input and thank you very much for your cooperation. Dave?
Chair Knowles, Superintendent Smith, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Dave Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. I've given stuff over there and their charts on it, but I don't really refer to them in the text.
Thank you.
The SACIT recommendations are on the board agenda tonight. I am disappointed in their recommendations relating to dual-language immersion programs. First, I am disappointed in the recommendation four, which reads, "Expand access to dual-language immersion programs." Unfortunately, the SACIT definition of dual-language immersion programs does not include immersion programs for English-native students, what I would call one-way dual-language immersion programs. Let me put forward three reasons why such programs are important. Dual-language immersion programs are better for students. Both one-way and two-way dual-language immersion programs are better for most students than English-only schools. Students in immersion programs learn everything students in English-only schools do, score as well as better over time on standardized tests, and show other cognitive benefits over English-only students. And they master a second language, an increasingly important skill. Parents want more dual-language immersion programs. In the 2013-14 PPS kindergarten lottery, there were 370 more applicants than slots for dual-language immersion programs. Most were English-native students. I have proposed a five-year dual-language immersion expansion plan that would provide an additional 350 kindergarten one-way slots. PPS should be responsive to what parents want. It should have as a core value and goal that every kindergartner whose parents want their student to attend a dual-language immersion program should find a slot in a dual-language immersion program. Three, dual-language immersion programs are important for economic growth and national security. Today's kindergartners will live in a very different world. Our communities, our state, our country increasingly needs more bilingual citizens. In a global economy, our economic well-being is increasingly dependent on the ability of our workforce to sell our goods and services abroad. Second, the SACIT in defining the immersion programs at Richmond and Ainsworth as focus option programs rather than dual-language immersion programs recommends that a significant number of their slots be evenly distributed by a high school region. This would take the geographic enrollment in these programs in the wrong direction by scattering students from each one-way immersion program all over the district. As dual-language immersion programs proliferate, PPS should seek to minimize travel distances and maximize the number of students coming from the neighborhood and able to walk to school. Parents who want into a specific immersion program should be able to buy or rent a home in the neighborhood and know that their child can get into the neighborhood dual-language immersion program. Neighborhood applicants to dual-language immersion programs should get admission priority over out-of-neighborhood applicants so that dual-language immersion programs are neighborhood-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers, Kenneth Wainio and Yoji Matsushima.
So, Sarah Tam was not here. We'll keep trying until we finish public comments, see if she shows up.
Ms. Chairperson, I believe there was a little bit of confusion as far as times, so I think some of the speakers were anticipating speaking closer to 7:00 or 7:45. So I just wanted to let everyone be aware of that. My name is Kenneth Wainio, last name's W-A-I-N-E-O, and this is with regards to the SACIT recommendations. Our family chose to apply to the Richmond lottery because it is a school rich in diversity, with 40 percent of the student population and 50 percent of the faculty being non-Caucasian. The choice to accept the lottery for our first child was a family decision, a decision based on current PPS sibling policy that keeps families together. Academic research has confirmed that families are necessary and critical for success in the immersion programs. SACIT's proposed policy for focused schools will separate families by removing protections relating to sibling preference. However, SACIT is inconsistent on this point, as SACIT also proposes strengthening the petition process because, quote, "Many families seek transfers between neighborhood schools for compelling reasons, including to keep siblings together." SACIT is for keeping families together, except when these families are a part of a focused or immersion school. SACIT's process for developing these recommendations has not been inclusive. Parents of targeted schools were not invited to provide input, principals were not involved, and their recommendations are being fast-tracked for implementation without prior vetting. SACIT states in the report that they do not know whether their recommendations will actually affect the changes they seek to achieve. We urge PPS to carefully consider the upheaval that the SACIT proposals will cause in our schools and family for unvetted policies that have no guarantee of success. The Richmond-Japanese immersion program and the Japanese-American community have been singled out by SACIT. We take issue with the separation of Richmond from other immersion programs. The Japanese immersion program is being treated differently than Chinese, Russian, Vietnamese, and most Spanish immersion programs. We urge you to slow down the process and take time to talk to affected families and schools. We want to be part of forming equity policy as it relates to immersion programs and believe that the first natural step should be to change the current rule that prohibits the school from informing and educating underserved communities about their lottery options. We also urge that PPS align the lottery and transfer changes with boundary review so that all changes happen simultaneously, thereby allowing time to continue to understand best practices and impacts. At 25 years old, Richmond is the oldest Japanese immersion program in the United States. We invite the school board to visit our school, see who we are, understand what we are about, and learn how the SACIT proposal would impact the Japanese immersion program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers, Sarah DeLuca and Tamber Lee Tarver.
Neither one of those may be thinking that it's an action item. It might be. You can just go ahead. Start with your -- were you here for the instructions?
No.
Okay, so start by stating your name, spelling your last name, and you have about three minutes. There'll be a green light that goes on when you start. When you have one minute left, there'll be a yellow light, and when there's a red light, then we ask you to wrap up. Okay? Thank you very much for being here.
Okay. My name is Tamber Lee Tarver. Last name is T-A-R-V-E-R, and I am here actually to speak about our student safety within our schools. I don't know how many of you guys know, but I'm the parent of the child that came up missing from Woodlawn October 6th of this year and ended up being found at Wendy's after traveling along I-5 and whoever knows, you know. We still, I don't know everywhere he's been that particular day. So that's what brought me here today. I am very concerned at the district's lack of response to this situation. It took me two weeks to get a very vague statement from the school as to what took place that day. Here we are, a little bit over a month, and I still do not have staff accounts of what happened. I feel like I'm being not really taken seriously about what could have happened to my child. This is the second time in four years that PPS has a student come up missing from a PPS school where the staff does not know how they left, who they left with, what time they left, with no information and no evidence. The first one was Chiron, the second one is my son Cameron. So, it's, I take this very seriously. I take it very seriously. I don't feel that the school is working with me. We've discussed trying to come up with a safety policy, a missing child active, effective missing child protocol, with no response. Putting more cameras in the schools, putting bells on the doors, putting some type of alarm system to where if somebody leaves out, it alarms the staff. Lockdown procedures. How many of our staff know the lockdown procedure? The lockdown procedure was not initiated until the police were bringing my son back to the school. It's a little bit late. It's like two, three hours late. So, those are things that I'm concerned with. This is not the only time a child has come up missing, it's just the only time it's made the news. I ran into so many families who have been through the same things, it's just not been publicized. This is a very big concern. When we drop our kids off at the schools, we expect our kids to be there. We expect them to be there, nice and safe and taken care of, until 3 o'clock when we come to get them. That's not being done. Last year, I was at the school every single day. I was basically my son's personal assistant, unpaid, mind you, and I saw other kids in distress. This year, there's plenty of kids that have been under distress, and it's not being addressed. We need to figure out what's making these kids being triggered to where they feel like they need to get out of that environment. We need to have each building assessed and even a risk assessment of how many different ways our kids can leave without being seen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have you gone all the way through the list here?
That is the six.
Will you run it again, see if anybody has come?
So, Sarah Tam and Yoji Matsushima?
No.
And Sarah DeLuca?
I'm guessing that many of these people are, like we thought, thinking they needed to come at the time that we're actually reviewing the SACIT recommendations. So, as long as my colleagues all agree, I think we should just set aside a little bit of time right then and see if any of them come at that time. So, let's go ahead and do that. Okay. Thank you very much to everyone who provided testimony, and again, Roseanne is right over here. If you have any questions or concerns, you want to talk to her about, that she will fill us in on. So, thank you. Now, it's time for the quarterly update from the Bond Accountability Committee. I'll ask Kevin Spelman, the chair of the committee, to come forward, along with Steve Marsh. Thank you very much to both of you for being here tonight, and I know that we've had a little switch-up on our board members who are now attending BAC as well. So, that's Director Bilal, Director Kurler, and Director Buell. So, look forward to having them join you guys.
Thank you. Co-Chair Knowles, members of the board, Superintendent Smith. I'm Kevin Spelman, Chair of the Bond Accountability Committee. With me is Steve Marsh, who is Multnomah County Auditor and esteemed member of our committee. We met on October 15. Director Bilal was there, at Concordia University, where we got a more detailed summary of the work that Fabian and Concordia are involved in. And it's, well, I guess, in a nutshell, we're all really excited to see something developing there and intrigued by what's going to come out of this. It's been a good quarter, I think, for the bond program. The highlight, I think, is the project teams at all 12 schools for the summer work should be congratulated. $19.2 million value of work was put in place in 63 calendar days. That's not quite true, because the elevator work is continuing, but nevertheless, that's quite an achievement. On top of that, only about a half of the project contingencies were spent, which is also a tribute to the project teams, because that's a reflection of the quality of the design work that was done and, I think, also the quality of the construction contractors. Design teams, talking of that, are hard at work on IP 15, which is next summer. Eight schools with a budget of $12.5 million, along with science classrooms, ADA upgrades, another $2.6 million, at 19 locations for next summer. I think staff has done another lessons-learned exercise and will be taking those lessons into summer 2015 and beyond. Staff also reported on the progress of recommendations from the performance auditors, and lots of that work has been completed. More is ongoing, and the next round of performance audit is underway, and we will be meeting with those auditors next week in preparation for that. The key issues for us, no surprise, it's kind of the same again, but we can give you updates and let you know what's going on. Schedules continue to be something of a concern with regard to the high schools, although progress has been made in both cases. The baseline schedule was not met for the schematic design, as you know, so that shows red on the report, but there's nothing can be done with that now. That's passed, and so we're working on recovery. Franklin's design development phase is complete. First construction bid package will be end of January or so. The mobilization of the contractor has slipped from March and is now planned in June. That's not really the end of the world, because only really preliminary work could be done before the students move out in any event. We will continue to watch the detailed construction schedule as that gets developed. Design development of Roosevelt is further behind, further behind than Franklin, not further behind than it was before. First bid package is set for early March. There will be a phased permitting process planned for Roosevelt, and the phasing has changed somewhat, partly because of city input concern. They had concern over some of the work being done since the students occupying the facility. So, we're going to have to have temporary facilities out at Roosevelt, which was not part of the original plan, but in some ways, not really a surprise. The schedule for the work remains the same, with the slight addition, site work and demolition will continue into the fall of 2017 after all the new facilities are completed. And if that's not enough, we'll have another major project starting shortly. Selection for the design team for Grant High School will take place second quarter of 2015. And again, I think there will be lots of lessons learned from Franklin and Roosevelt taken into that process. Budget. We'll know, well, the total budget is now $522 million. It's been increased by the $8 million that you approved a couple of months ago, although we're all hopeful that we'll be able to recoup that from other sources, plus the $15 million commitment from Concordia. We'll know a lot more about budget very shortly, next time we meet. The guaranteed maximum prices for Franklin and Roosevelt are pending, coming up very shortly, and this is, these are real key times. This is a real transfer of risk from the district to the contractors. And that's really going to tell us an awful lot about some of the concerns we've had about market adjustments, et cetera, escalation, et cetera. IP 14 is instructive in that regard, good news and bad news there. One, the bad news was there does seem to be some upward market pressure causing price increases, so we have concerns about that. On the other hand, as I mentioned, the contingencies held up really well, and if we can replicate that, that would go a long way to offsetting the market adjustments. Equity is another key element. As you know, we've been struggling since the beginning in trying to measure the extent of student involvement, and I think now staff has settled on reporting that on a year-by-year basis rather than a project-by-project basis. And that seems to make sense, because lots of those activities are not project-related. So, we're looking forward to following that. MWESBs, minority women-owned businesses, emerging small businesses, now represent 9 percent of the total payments to date, which is still obviously not where it needs to be. Contractors still lag behind because of the low bid basis of the work that's been done to date. We continue to expect that to increase. Time will tell. Consultants, on the other hand, in total, are meeting the 18 percent goal, which is great, except when you drill down into some of the projects, there's certainly room for improvement there. On some of the IP work, the prime design firm qualified, so that kind of bumps that, which is great, but that maybe skews those numbers a little bit. Other issues, we have been focused very much, I think, because of the stage of the jobs, on schedule, budget, scope, quality, all those key elements, and we need to get back to some of the other criteria that we were charged with following, like sustainability, et cetera. So, we're going to work with staff and get specific reports on those, excuse me, on those elements. In general, it's been another good quarter for the bond program, and once more, we remain impressed by the quality and professionalism of staff and the design and construction teams. Steve?
Well, you pretty well said it in detail. Just to kind of sum it up, I'd say that, you know, we've had two real successful summer IP project years now under our belt, and that's really, is a hopeful sign, as long as the big projects are coming up now. So, the real proof is going to be in the bigger projects. I think folks have got a good start on it, learned a lot from the initial ones, and we're still cautiously optimistic.
Questions or comments from board members? You guys pick. Director Bilal. There we go.
I was just going to mention that I really appreciated the conversation at the last Accountability Committee meeting where there was a really good discussion and engagement around how do we meet these equity goals, that it can be challenging in certain ways. Bids are a lot, or as you said, you know, depending on who's getting the bill, it can skew the numbers a little bit, but I really appreciated their input. They came up with some really good ideas, having had experience, a couple of the members going through this process about what you can do to make sure that everybody's getting a shot at these. And that's, I know it was a priority for our board when we put this out, is that we wanted to make sure that our community benefited from it and that everybody was benefiting from it, that was qualified to do it, and still saving money as best we can, since we're spending taxpayers' dollars. So, I just wanted to say thank you and just really appreciated that conversation, and staff was really open to hearing and engaging about how we work our, do our work.
Sure. Thank you.
Director Kurler?
Yes, I was curious, so now with the Roosevelt situation, there's a lawsuit or a complaint, and has there been a risk assessment asked from your committee, or have you looked at that, and what the, just what the timing is and what the potential implications are? Curious to know your thinking.
You know, that, at least, I don't know the timing of that complaint, but I didn't, I don't think our committee heard about it until after, subsequent to our last meeting. I'm not aware of any, what that process really means. As far as we're concerned, until we hear otherwise, that project is continuing forward like any other.
Right. I think that maybe we could have Jolly Patterson, our legal counsel, give us a brief on that. That would, she'd be a better person to figure that out.
Okay, but I just, from a risk standpoint, since you guys are in the business, it would be great to hear from Jolly.
We did that before.
It should be on your radar, is what I'm saying. I'm hoping that you delve into it.
No question. The schedule at Roosevelt remains a challenge irrespective of any outside influence like that. Yes.
So, I just had one question. I noticed in your memo to us that you've mentioned some concerns about the design advisory committees, and I was curious about what your concerns were there, if you had them formulated.
Well, that issue, that issue came up from public comment. It didn't come, it wasn't generated from the committee, although in previous meetings, we've expressed some concerns about the way the committees were operating, and primarily in terms, our concern primarily was the time it was taking and the effect on schedule. I don't think the committee has expressed an opinion one way or the other about the makeup of the DAGs. Our concern is more what do they bring to the process? How do they improve the process without being a drag on schedule and budget? That's, that would be our concern. I think we likely will mention this to the performance auditors, because we now, really, we have two experiences, two, well, three, including Fabian. And maybe they can pull out the good parts and recommend changes to the parts that didn't work so well, and we'd certainly be in favor of that.
Be interesting. Okay. Okay, well, thank you both for being here. Appreciate all your volunteer time that you're putting into this project. Thank you so much. I know. Thank you. Okay. According to our contract with the Portland Association of Teachers, we offer comments, an opportunity to give comments to the board on occasion, and they have requested time on our agenda tonight, so I'd like to welcome PAT President Gwen Sullivan to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
No, it's an interesting placement, considering I'm really here to talk about the achievement compacts that you will be taking, maybe taking a position on.
Well, you know, those are at the end of the agenda, Gwen, so if you want to wait.
I was thinking I was going to go have dinner with my family, but I might come back after dinner.
Okay. Well, next time, let's figure that out a little better.
Yeah. So, basically, why I'm here is to kind of give the history lesson that you all are aware of, which is you have already made a decision about supporting the Achievement Compact Committee in their decision not to put targets into the compact. And so, the history lesson really is in the summer that this board took, I think, a very powerful and really well-thought-out position around the use of the Smarter Balance Assessment for our students. for our students, our teachers, and our schools, basically outlining that until such time that the test was valid, reliable, and free from cultural, linguistic, and economic bias, that you didn't think it was right to, to have students and, and teachers and schools be evaluated in that way. So, then the next phase was the Achievement Compact Committee, that of course you know is made up of five administrators, five teachers, and the community parents that also come to those meetings. And at that time, the committee decided it doesn't make any sense to set targets because we haven't really looked at, we don't have any baseline data. We haven't even seen, is it valid? Is it reliable? Is it free from cultural bias and so on? And so, at that point, the committee didn't set the targets. And then it came back to you, and you unanimously agreed that it didn't make sense. So, I give you that history lesson because then I found out that Nancy Golden sent you a letter saying that they are denying the request, or denying the Achievement Compact, and that now at this meeting, you have to make some sort of percentages for a test that we still agree hasn't been proven to be valid, reliable, or free from cultural, linguistic, or economic bias. So, knowing that history, I will also bring up to you your equity, the equity policy that this board had brought forward. I think it started in, was it 2010 the equity policies began? But I think it finished, not last year, year before. But there are things in the equity policy that really go to this issue, which has to do with making sure that the district provides every student with equitable access to high-quality and culturally relevant curriculum, instruction, support, facilities, and other educational resources, even when it means differentiating resources to accomplish this goal. So, I would argue that the state coming in and saying that you have to set targets actually violates our own equity policy. So, knowing this, I know you're in a conundrum of sorts, but I think that when you have strong values about things and you know when things are right and things are not right, I would argue that you've already made a decision. And if they want to make a decision over this board's decision and the Achievement Compact's decision, I say let them. Because if they want to violate our, our equity policy, they want to violate the things that we know has, doesn't make any educational, doesn't make educational sense or have merit, then let them. It's not on you, it's on them. So, that is the message that I bring to you. And I hope, I know it's a hard decision, but I hope that you make the right ones. So, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to be here. Okay, now, we'll have the quarterly update on the capital improvement bond. Jennifer Tannen Smith, you want to go ahead?
Jim Owens, the Senior Director for our Office of School Modernization, will present our quarterly update on the capital improvement bond.
Yeah, I was so excited that I misfired. Well, thank you, Jennifer Tannen Smith, and good evening, Board. Tonight, I'd like to briefly provide a quarterly update from Office of School Modernization on the status of our bond program. I would like to say thank you to Kevin Spelman and Steve March for their, for their report this evening. I think it's an excellent reflection of the program's status, and it's aligned with the material that staff provides to the bond accountability committee on a continuing basis. I think it also continues to convey an appropriate level of community oversight on the bond program that we're moving into year three on, actually, on our eight-year program. In your bond package is the November update of the balance scorecard, which of course is the reporting tool that we use monthly with you. And what I'd like to do tonight is quickly summarize the balance scorecard perspectives and then provide a quick, a couple of quick photos around the work that was done this summer. As was mentioned by Kevin and Steve, I think the work that we bid off this summer at the twelve schools was pretty ambitious, and the outcome really turned out to be very So, in our balance scorecard, we have those perspectives. Here we go. In terms of the overall perspective, program status, I would echo, is, is in the green on our scorecard. It's on time, it's on budget, and it's visible to the community. Those are the three primary objectives. As I mentioned, we're twenty-five percent through the eight-year program, moving into year three, and we're achieving our objectives in a very effective manner. This summer, we completed the very ambitious IP or improvement project 2014, Phase Two work. Phase Two represented the work that was needed to get the schools ready for opening in September. We're now on Phase Three for the elevator work at three of the schools. And so, it represented another very successful summer construction season. The work that we're doing currently at Beach, James John, and Hosford is our first opportunity to put elevator towers in these schools to provide important accessibility access to upper-level floors. And that work's going on very much on schedule. We're expecting to have that completed in the spring. I would like to highlight that this work is going on while students are in session, and the work has been done on a not-to-interference basis with learning. Feedback we've received from the building level has been very positive. So, we're really pleased with that, with that outcome. We've also been fortunate to learn quite a bit from the previous summers. Again, as Kevin mentioned, a lot of the lessons learned, we're building upon. And as we take work on over each consecutive summer, we're getting better at it, we're getting more effective. I think the outcomes that we're seeing at the schools are, are better as well. Of course, we also benefited from excellent design teams, from builders, and of course, the weather, again, was very cooperative and allowed the work to, particularly the re-roofing work, to, to complete. And really, really great to see that. Another item I'd like to highlight tonight is the importance of some of the safety outcomes. Although we don't often talk of it, I think it's important for the Board to recognize that the safety outcomes on these projects is, is a key objective. And relative to students, relative to staff, relative to the contractors, community members, that the work that we've done thus far has been done in a very safe fashion. And we've only had very minor injuries to contractor personnel and have not had reportable incidents as a result. So, we want to continue that, particularly as we get into the heavier construction when we do the full modernizations at the high schools. Finally, I wanted to mention the construction industry environment here in Portland is, is evolving. We're seeing that over the last two years, contractors are getting much busier. There are other local school districts in the Portland metro area that have bond programs. Beaverton, for example, has a very large, ambitious program. And our contractor base that we're using for this work, particularly the contractors that have experience in K-12, is really being stretched. So, we're going to watch that closely, and it's important to ensure that we continue to have excellent competition, that the pricing that we're seeing on our, on our competitive bidding is in line with what our budget estimates are. But it does bear, bear watching. In terms of our budget perspective, what I'd like to highlight is a slide that I know is pretty hard to read, but you have in your packets that describe the overall program. And you can see on that second column, the program started at four hundred and eighty-two million. And as we've gone through various additions to the program, the eight million, for example, an additional borrow, the nearly fourteen million in the, in the bond premium, that's not currently being used for project planning purposes, and several other sources, we're actually up at five hundred and seven million. And with the addition of the fifteen million from Concordia that we're anticipating for the Fabian replacement project, that should bring us up to about five hundred and twenty-two. So, the program is, is, is getting larger, and to manage all this work together, it's important that you know that we're integrating all these fund sources together. The high schools, of course, are getting center-stage attention currently. And as we move through the design phase, we'll be soon starting the negotiation of our guaranteed maximum prices. And the GMPs, as they're called, are important precursors to getting started with the construction this spring. And as was mentioned, it's important that these GMPs are fully in line with the scope that we're going to be accomplishing. So, we have another effort to go through as we take the design work that's been completed thus far and align it with our scopes and with our construction contracts. And then as we start bidding the trade work, that it all comes in line. As Kevin mentioned, it does represent a certain amount of risk transfer, and so the contractor is going to be watching this very, very closely. The Fabian project was the highlight of the last bond accountability committee meeting. We actually met at Concordia University. And the work at Fabian that we did place on hold temporarily while Concordia was doing fundraising, we've now moved forward with, again, to take it to full design. And anticipating the contribution from Concordia through some documents that you'll be seeing in the near future, will allow us to begin construction and have this school fully replaced by the, for, ready for students by the fall of 2017. So, a lot of work going on there. The project from the bond standpoint is a little under thirty million, and with Concordia's contribution, this is actually a forty-four million dollar construction project. So, between the two high schools, Fabian, and the next summer round, we've got a significant amount of work on our plate that needs to be executed, you know, on time, on budget, and visible to the community. Finally, on the budget perspective, the summer 2014 project cost came in under expectations. As was mentioned, again, we didn't use as much of the contingency as we expected. That's good news. However, the bid prices came in a little higher than we expected, but it's, it's balancing out nicely, and we're able to use these contingency funds for other, other purposes as we go through the program. Schedule perspective, again, around the high schools is one that is demanding a lot of attention. At Roosevelt High School, the phasing plan, which is an important document which will describe how we'll be moving students and staff during the course of the two years of construction, is currently being developed. We do expect to issue a memorandum to you that'll describe the phasing in a narrative format, so you can get a sense of how the work's being accomplished and how the kids are being moved around as the, as the work progresses. However, we're very confident that our makeup plan is, is being achieved. The work will be phased there in a way that portions of the campus will be delivered early, and then other portions will be delivered in time for the fall of 2017 school year. So, good news there, and team continues to work very hard on that. The Franklin High School project is aligned with the work that we're doing at the Marshall Campus. The Marshall Campus is coming along very nicely. As that work completes this winter, we'll be offering a number of community showcases, both the Franklin community as well as the Grant community, to see what improvements were made and to see how that campus will support the Franklin students, and then, of course, subsequently, the Grant students. So, very excited about how that work is progressing. We also have a solid schedule on Franklin that is assuring that we'll have completion there in the fall of 2017. The Fabian schedule, as I mentioned, is, is turned back on again. We're currently in schematic design phase, which we'll be completing at the end of November, and then rapidly moving into, into design development and then into construction. Like the Franklin project, we are using a swing site, and we recently announced the use of Tubman for the students at Fabian, and they'll be residing there for two school years while the demolition, bateman, and construction of the Fabian project progresses. And then lastly, on the schedule front, the Grant High School project is, is emerging now, and we are going through the process of selecting the team that will be managing that project. And we'll be beginning master planning this summer, actually. So, prior to starting the master planning, we go through a process to select the, the design team and then begin the work at Grant. We'll, you will have learned a substantial amount about how to do master planning and how to manage the design work from the Roosevelt and the Franklin project. So, really looking forward to, to Grant coming online. Stakeholder perspective, continue to receive very positive feedback from the building-level leadership. We've had extensive amount of stakeholder review from the internal staff here at the district for the two high schools and for the next summer round of projects. Really important process to ensure that we're getting that. And then I'd like to touch on the outreach sessions that we continue to conduct in our neighborhoods. Did a number of back-to-school nights, not only at the project sites, but at the feeder schools. And it's been very positive in terms of messaging to the community, what we're doing and what the impacts are on people. Finally, the equity perspective, as was mentioned, the bond program is embracing our equity in public purchasing and contracting policy. And again, we have three tiers to it. Our payment to MWESB firms is dropped a bit from several months ago. We were running around eleven and a half percent, running just under ten percent at this time against an aspirational goal of eighteen. This represents approximately three million dollars, though, paid out to MWSB-owned firms on our projects, which is actually a significant amount. Our contractor workforce equity component is one that we're measuring for the first time this summer, and we actually exceeded the goal. This is where we're measuring apprentices by trades as a percentage of total hours. So, we landed on about twenty-four percent overall on the work against a goal of twenty percent. And then finally, on the student engagement front, I think we're seeing, we're really seeing some nice trends involving student participation in the work. Our internship work this summer was quite a success. We're doing a lot of different activities with the students. This slide depicts the number of students that have been involved in the bond program, career learning opportunities that we've had, some of the firms involved, and some of the hours that have been contributed to the work. This is the tool that we're using to track this on a, on a regular basis. Okay, and lastly, I'd like to close with a couple of photos showing before, during, and after. These might be a little tough to pick out some of the details, but highlighting the work at these three schools, Beach, Vernon, and Boise Elliott, gives you a sense of the accessibility improvements, the seismic work, the roof tear-off and replacements, and the science classrooms. And it really provides a sense of all the disruption that occurs while the kids are gone over the, over the course of the summer. Some work on interior seismic retrofit, which is extremely disruptive, but this work really enhances the safety of the schools, whether it's on interior sheer walls or on roof diaphragm strengthening, but it really enhances the, the safety. And then lastly, Vernon. This is work that is representative of some of the science classroom upgrades. Not only does it include sinks and power drops, but also some new lab tables. So, it brings the middle-grade programs up to a higher standard that's more aligned with our other science classrooms at other, at other levels. So, at this time, I'd like to invite any questions or comments that the Board may have.
Director Buell?
Thank you for that, thank you for that report. The project management cost report, so we're sixty-five million under, but that's under from the project estimate at, I mean, from the current budget? Because that wouldn't be sixty-five under, that would be twenty-four under from the original?
We, we actually measure the forecasted cost to complete the work, which prior to beginning construction, you don't assume that you're going to use the contingency. So, there's a lot of project-level contingency that's embedded in there at the project level. At the program level, we also have contingency, such as the program board reserve that resides. So, it's a reflection of where we are at this point in time, and this gets updated monthly.
Well, the, like, for instance, if you go to Franklin, it's ten million under budget.
Correct.
But the project estimate at completion is thirteen million over budget from the beginning. So, that ten million under budget is from the current budget, how we're looking at it? Okay, thank you. And the second, the second question is, you said that the, the team managing the grant thing, the grant is being put together? What do you mean by that?
Our, our plan is to... Our, our plan is to have each of these full modernization projects led by an OSM project director. And so we're going through the recruiting process to select a project director for that team. And then that project director will be involved in selecting the design team and the contractors that'll actually do the work.
Where is the project, where are the project directors drawn from?
Project directors are professionals in the community that have experience with capital projects and capital programs in school districts. They're primarily drawn from the, from the Oregon Southwest Washington area.
The, let's go to Marshall High School. Is everything going to be out of Marshall High School that is not directly related to Franklin High School?
When you say everything out?
Well, I mean, everything, for instance, talking to Franklin teachers who've been told supposedly that they better be ready to share rooms. And the second part is they better be ready to bring only one, one filing cabinet with them and a phone and a desk. And that's it? That's what, that's what it's going to be like for them at Marshall? So my question really is, is everything out of Marshall, then? We're not leaving anything in Marshall? Like, we're not leaving something like warehousing things or how does that, is that?
There are a number of items that are being kept on the Marshall campus. I know the closed closet, for example, is, is being kept there. We're moving a Multnomah County student-based health clinic from Franklin into Marshall. There's furniture.
But that's part of Franklin now?
Correct. That's Franklin now. There are, the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, as we refer to them. The classroom furnishings are, are mostly moving from Franklin to Marshall where they'll be used by the students for the duration. There are items that are at Marshall that'll be moved to other schools that we're coordinating on. But when the school is fully ready for students over the summer, over the summer of 2015, the school will be fully configured to be used. The shared classroom concept that will apply to the newly modernized Franklin will also be, will also be used at the Marshall campus.
But in a different, in a different...
In a slightly different way, but the general ed classrooms.
Different numbers, I mean, different numbers? Because basically, we were trying, we put those 10 extra classrooms in Franklin, didn't we, so they didn't have to do that?
Well, no, the, the additional classrooms was...
Still got to do some, but...
Additional capacity there, but it was, it was also because of how the classrooms, the general ed classrooms are being used. They wanted to be able to take advantage of the sharing concepts to start using teacher workspaces while at Marshall so that when they return to Franklin in the fall of 2017, that they'll have experience in teaching in that new pedagogy.
So what, what you're telling, let me see if I can get this straight, because I don't understand it yet. Are you saying that at Marshall, we're purposely downsizing the teachers' workspaces and we're purposely not putting teachers to, I mean, not giving teachers their own room so that they'll get used to not doing that at Franklin when they come back? That's kind of what you said.
To, to some extent, the teachers will be exposed to that, that new teaching pedagogy at, while they're at Marshall, not fully, but partially, so that they can start getting experience with it.
So...
This is very much aligned with what building level leadership and the teachers have been working out. So it's very much of a joint effort to establish this.
Geez, I don't know how to handle this Superintendent Smith. I mean, I, I have information that's going to just go... You want to, you want to deal with me later on it, or you want me to just ask it now? Which would you like?
Really? That's a real choice?
Yeah, really. That's your choice.
Can I choose?
Whichever.
Can I choose?
Whichever. No, no.
You know, I don't know where you're going to go with it, so...
Well...
If, I mean, seriously, if it feels like something that is one that we want to go deal with later and then bring back once you've understood what it is that you're going for...
Yeah, I'd like to have a, I'd like to get a better understanding, because I'm not getting it here.
Then let's go, let's do it. I mean, we have a significant agenda tonight, yes. So I think that's a good op, I think that's a good option.
Who was going to deal with, who was going to, let's set up who's going to deal with me?
Let's follow up with Jim. And if we, if you'd like me in that conversation, I'm happy to join it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Let's do that later, because I think there's a lot of questions around the Franklin to Marshall move that aren't coming out the same as we're talking about them here.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you very much. I'm in the, if anyone in the audience would like to email me and ask me about those things, I'd be more than happy to. If you go to steedbuell.com, a Portland school board member, has my email and information.
Is this a commercial?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. And that, that'll be below the screen, you'll see that. Any, anybody else have questions?
Can I get that on below the screen?
Yeah, I think we should do that, don't you? Other questions from the board or comments? Director Curran?
Pam, I just wanted to reiterate your, your notion of maybe getting briefed by Jolly on this, on the Roosevelt?
Yeah, sure.
And that would be a memo?
I think so.
I mean, not now, tonight, right? I'm assuming, or?
Well, it's, you know, it's legal action, so it'll be either an executive session or something like that.
Yeah, so I think we should do that. And then I guess I would ask, Jim, does this seem to be, to your department, worthy of a risk management assessment?
I think it's important to recognize that, I'll use the concept of form follows function, that the, the spaces that have been laid out at Roosevelt are very much consistent with what the expectations were in terms of the way program can be delivered. I think that the educator leaders in the district have been working very hard at how they're going to teach out of those spaces, and that's still something of a work in progress. In terms of the project proceeding, we are very much proceeding, as was approved by the board, relative to the two adjacent Maker spaces. And the Maker spaces will have a variety of features in terms of how they're outfitted for multiple, multiple uses, extending into the CTE arena, extending into STEM applications. That's all being developed as we speak. In terms of the, some of the comments that have been made about the space, I'm not sure from a risk standpoint, if you're referring to, is the, is the complaint that's been filed appropriate to be assessed for risk? I suspect it would be, and I don't know what the outcome would be on it.
Yeah, that's just my point, is that not being briefed and having no idea what the chances of success of that complaint is and what the result of success would be, I would just, from a board perspective, like to understand that we have a lot of money on the line in this school, so...
And I think that we can just go ahead and...
Yeah.
...be briefed on that. And then if there are questions after that, I'm, that's fine. I'm not sure that it's Jim's role to assess risk in a legal suit, but I, I understand where you're going, so...
There's, one is the legal and then one is the financial.
Right.
Yeah.
So, anybody else? Director Belal?
I just wanted to say, I had the chance this summer to go see some of this work going on, and it's just so exciting, whether you're on a roof and you get to see how it's transformed. And it's interesting, I was, I got to talk to a parent who's at one of the schools that's undergoing this work, and I said, "So how does it feel being back, you know, in your school?" And they were like, "Hmm, kind of school is normal." Because primarily, it was seismic outfitting, right? It's, it's stuff that, for the most part, you can't see unless you're really trained, or some of it you can't see. And so we talked a little bit about that and the excitement and how exciting it is to finally have, begin to build back in or build in ADA accessibility with our, with our elevators. Again, there are a couple of schools that I, parents who I've gotten to talk to, and that work's ongoing. And it seems to be not disruptive at all. And so big kudos both to our project manager, who, you know, every one of these projects always has, anybody that's been in construction, right? There's anybody that's done a remodel knows there's always unforeseen things that come up in the managing of that and the working with that to make sure that, I mean, I know that even one school had their fence down in time for the Community Care Day to, to work on the grounds. There's such a short window, and I just wanted to say thank you and thanks to the project team and the contractors for both being safe but also bringing these in so well. It's really exciting. And I hope that as we continue to move forward with this 30-year plan, that our community gets to be as excited. I wish we could bring them all up onto a roof. I don't know if they'd all want that. But it's just, it's really exciting and it's really keeping our kids safe. The, the science classrooms, it's all just, it's exactly what we should be doing as we begin to update our infrastructure that's been, that hasn't had that updated in hundreds of years, hundreds, well, 100 years, 50, 100 years. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you, Director Belal. I'll pass that on, I'll pass that on to the...
Great, great. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I think we're on to our second reading of the complaint policy. At our September 23 board meeting, a first reading was held on the revised complaint policy after 21 days of being open for public comment. The board is ready to vote on the proposed amendments. So we'll now consider Resolution 4985, resolution to adopt revised complaint policy 4.50.030- P, and revocation of the citizen complaint policy 7.20.030. Do I have a motion?
Some more?
Second. Okay. Director Belal moves and Director Atkins seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4985. Ms. Houston, do we have any citizen comment?
We do not.
We do not. Is there a board discussion on the resolution? We've seen this many, many times, so, others?
4985, looking in the back.
4985, it's the...
Page 25.
Revised complaint, okay, I have all sorts of amendments. Do you want me to go through questions I have and then make amendments? Or do you want me to just make amendments as we go? I bet I can go through and talk about it.
I think, um...
Do you see these orange things there?
Yeah, let's see that.
Is this the policy to the administrative directive or...
Don't you want to be able to answer questions?
So, we actually received a number of questions that we were going to have Jolly go ahead and respond to, because there are ones that were received between publishing the policy. So we may want to just start with Jolly, who can, which may address some of what Steve's thinking about.
You can go backwards, I'm going to stop there.
So if you have a presentation for us?
Just question, answering some questions.
So, so I'm Jolly Patterson. I'm the general counsel for the school district. And as, as Chair Knowles said, the board had a work session on this policy on September 9th and then a first reading on September 23rd. At which point, there was lots of discussion from the board and we have received community feedback. Since the first reading of the policy, which also included a review of the administrative directive, a few things were clarified in the administrative directive. Those are reflected in the red line of, of the documents that you received. So one, we clarified that calendar days, that days refer to calendar days throughout. That was a helpful feedback from the public. We also included the requirement that the, when the final decision from the superintendent has to include findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the legal basis for the decision. When we talked at the first reading, we were waiting some clarification from ODE. They provided the clarification that the referral to legal findings can refer to either statute, administrative, administrative rules, or board policy. So that's also included in the AD. And then finally, included some clarification about what happens with complaints when, when they're filed during board or during school breaks. So we did receive some questions from a few members of the public, so I thought I would just run through quickly some of the general themes that we received. So one question was whether the complainants are required to talk to teachers or principals before they can access the complaint process. And the answer to that is no, that we, that was initial, that was in your initial draft, but we, we took out that requirement. While it's, while it's definitely encouraged, they're not required to go through that process before starting the formal complaint process. We've also received questions about whether the, the complaint needs to be in writing, and the answer to that is yes. To start the formal complaint process, it does need to be in writing, but we have really limited the, the scope of required topics, so in order to make that more accessible. And as always, through this entire process, the ombudsman's role is to assist people with the process. We received some questions about whether the ombudsman was the decision maker at step one, and we, I think we've pretty clearly clarified in the administrative directive that the ombudsman is not a decision maker, that she is there to help, help facilitate resolution amongst the parties. That's why we used language that one of the things she will do is seek multiple perspectives, not that she's going to be engaging in formal investigation or fact finding. So really trying to clarify those roles. And the decision maker at step one will generally be either the senior director of schools, the, the department manager, or somebody else appointed through the superintendent's office. We received some questions about the ombudsman's reporting structure. So the ombudsman does report to the chief of community engagement and public affairs. She has a dotted line to the superintendent, which means that she has access to the superintendent whenever she needs that access, and they meet regularly. We asked, we had questions about whether PPS also has a anti-harassment policy, which is required by state law, and we do, and whether that policy allows for anonymous complaints, and it does. So that's a separate policy. People could go through the procedure outlined in that policy. If they were unhappy with that, they could then access the, the complaint process, but that is a separate policy and, and has all the requirements of state law. Just a few more. We had questions about what if the deadlines in the administrative directive are not met? And one of the key functions, many key functions of the ombudsman's role is to track complaints and ensure that those timelines are met. So if somebody had a concern that timelines weren't being met, they could definitely contact the ombudsman or the superintendent's office. But we're also affirmatively tracking those, those timelines to make sure they're met. There's a little bit of confusion about why some of our other policies also include complaint processes or, or appeal processes. And I think in a, in an organization of this complexity, it's appropriate that there are, that that's not just necessarily one size fits all. People can always go through the complaint process and, and if there's something else that's more appropriate to their complaint, the ombudsman is there to help them find that. But so, for instance, the example we use in the administrative directive is that there is an appeal process specifically around enrollment and transfer decisions. So there are a few places where we have set out kind of an, an appeal process, but the ombudsman is there to help if, if people need help navigating that. Finally, questions about the timeline for the complaint process. And so we do have a one-year requirement that complaints are brought, but within one year of, of deter, of, of realizing the nature of the complaint. So, and that's very expanded from the initial draft, which had 90 days. So anyways, that's just a, a quick overlay of where I think we've, we've had some of the questions from the public. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the board has.
I have a procedural question for you. We, we first saw this, I think you said, on the 9th, is that right? Somewhere...
That was a work session on September 9th.
A work session on the 9th, and then a first reading on the 23rd, and then 21 days open for comment, and now we have this in front of us. Our resolution is not actually the policy, our resolution is the approval of the policy. So at this time, are we taking more, other than not changes from the board, are we taking more changes that could be adopted by the board?
I think we'd have to then go, I, I think then we'd have to go back for a, a third re, I mean, we'd have them make those changes and bring them...
I guess I'm asking more about the process for taking those suggestions. I know Director Buell has some things that he wants to change in the policy, but not in the resolution.
So I suppose that the board tonight could propose amendments to the policy, but if those are significant changes, then it would need to go out again for a public comment, because that's what we do.
Okay, okay. So we'll just go through the regular process of...
A second, second reading.
Any one of us making a suggestion for a change, looking for a motion and a second and a, and then a vote on each one of those changes.
Good. Think that probably makes sense.
I think that's...
So clarifying follow-up to that?
Yeah, sure.
But that, so what you're basically saying is we have to re-extend the whole timeline for eventually having the new policy on the books?
It's not right.
Because we'd have to go back out, essentially.
So what our policy on policy says, and has been our practice, is that when there are significant changes between the first and second reading, that we go out again for a second first reading so that members of the public can, can give us comment on what those changes are. I think if the changes are relatively minor, and that's a little, it's a little bit of a subjective call, then we wouldn't need that. But if they're, like, so the ca, the calendar versus working day, I wouldn't say that requires, something like that wouldn't require a second first reading.
Okay. And then just another quick point is that the resolution, a very brief resolution, the second piece of that is that the board will receive a report on the implementation of the revised policy within one year of the adoption. And that was a very important piece that we talked about, given we've done a number of revisions and wordsmithing and tweaks to this. We, it may not land exactly where we all want it to be word for word, but that we... It may not land exactly where we all want it to be, word for word, but that we are going to, it's built into this, that we will review it, we'll hear on how it's going, and could adjust as needed. So, that would be a perspective, just from my perspective, wanting to have this on the books and implement it as soon as possible.
Right. Okay. Director Buell, you indicated a little earlier that you had some changes that you wanted to make the policy. Are these, are these, excuse me, are these, oh, so they're just questions, they're not, they're not suggestions? And are they, can I ask, are they suggestions that you've made in prior meetings? Or are there new suggestions now that you're coming up with at this meeting?
Well, it's hard to say. I can't remember all the suggestions I made in the prior meetings.
Okay. Go ahead, your questions.
My memory's kind of slipping.
Director Buell, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and take a few, and then if we have somebody else, we'll mix it up a little bit, otherwise you can just keep going.
I just have a concern about the wordiness of this. It's very, very difficult to wade through it. I waded through it, but I've also read it several times, and I'm on top of this. I think that the wordiness is beyond what it needs to be, but I don't think anybody's going to change that this evening. I do have a question about, one of the things that wasn't, that you didn't respond to was the missing deadlines. There's nothing in here about if you, if the school district misses a deadline, we move to the next, like, if we miss the first deadline in step one, then do we automatically push them to step two? They're now in step two, that's what we talked about, but I didn't see anything in the policy, in the process, that said that. It's not stated anyplace in there?
I think that it would be difficult to move to step two without completing step one, because step two is a review of the decision that's made at step one.
So, I'm sorry.
So, I think that, so I think that if there's, I mean, so as I said earlier, I think with the ombudsman affirmatively tracking these deadlines, the expectation is that we're not going to have missed deadlines. And if people are concerned that we're getting close to deadlines, or there's confusion about deadlines, then they should, we should definitely work together to make sure that those are deeply expedited. I don't think that something would work, that if we missed that deadline, it was, we could just jump, I'm just repeating myself, that we could just jump to the next stage, because each stage depends on the resolution of the stage before.
So, what you're saying is that for years, we've missed deadline after deadline after deadline on our complaint procedure? Jen, since I've been here, they've been, we've missed them several times, many times. I've had all sorts, parents sent me things, saying they missed the deadline, and we're sitting around for us, and so you're saying now we're not going to? But we don't have, but is that what you're saying, we're not going to, we're going to try our hardest now to not miss the deadlines? So, if we miss the deadlines for some parents, I should bring back a resolution that we need to put in there that we missed the deadline, if I'm still around, haven't been recalled or anything.
I think that part of the expectation... I lost the question.
This is a comment, and question, and question, it's both.
Could you go ahead and repeat it?
Question was, are we expected to now, what is the school district saying will happen if we miss deadlines, like we have this long history of missing deadlines? So, and the community is supposed to, this is the question, the community is supposed to just say, "Okay," on these deadlines, if you missed it, or what? I mean, how, I don't understand how, if I'm a community member, I would have any faith in an organization, I mean, in this deal that didn't have deadlines, so that's the question.
So, I think that we knew that there were many ways that we needed to improve our complaint process for the community, and hiring the ombudsman was a key part of that. Updating this policy in the AD was a key part of that, and part of the, so now we have clear expectations about deadlines, and we also have the, a person who is responsible for helping to manage those deadlines. I believe that through those efforts, we are going to do a much better job than we have occasionally in the past. I don't think we've always missed all the deadlines.
No, we haven't always missed all the deadlines, but we missed a whole lot of them, just since I...
So, I think that now we're going to have the clarity. I think, you know, as Director Atkins said, if it somehow, if those efforts don't improve, then maybe we come back in a year, and we'll be able to look at it in a different way. But already with this year, we've seen that those efforts are, or that those resources are making a difference. I also just want to speak briefly to the wordiness of the policy and the administrative directive. So, the ombudsman is developing user-friendly documents and pamphlets that explain this better. One of the things about procedural documents like this is they do have to include a lot of details, so that it's, all the things that everybody has asked about throughout this process are clear. That requires a lot of words and sections and explanation, but she is developing things that are going to make it, that will be more accessible.
Did the ODE suggest that we should be done within 90 days?
State law requires that the process take 90 days before people can then appeal to ODE, so it wasn't a suggestion.
I count 132 days.
So, that would be including the, so what we did is we, people, there's step one, and then there's step two to the superintendent. After the superintendent's issues the final decision of the district...
They called it the final decision.
Then, people can either choose to appeal to ODE, or they can, which, so those are the 90 days in step one and step two, or they can request an appeal to the board. The board then decides whether they're going to accept the appeal. If they accept the appeal, they hear the appeal.
Well, if the complaint procedure that we have includes an appeal to the board, which it does, it's right here on, you know, it's in here, an appeal to the board, and that's within the complaint procedure, and that, by the time that's finished, it's 132 days, I wouldn't think our complaint procedure would be 90 days.
But the 90 days is before they can, before complainants can go to ODE. So, this is what we, I'm sorry, we covered this in the last two sessions with the board, so I didn't bring that...
I know that you tried to cover it, but I don't think it really got covered. It appears to me, in this particular document, that the appeal to the board is part of the, that's right under complaint process, here's appeal to the board. That comes out 132 days. And it's supposed to be 90.
Except under, before step three...
It says that the superintendent is final, but it's not final, because you can then appeal to the board, which is in the same government body, are the, basically, the supervisors of the, the supervisors of the superintendent. So, the final would be, when you've got through the board, that would be the final, and then you would go to choose to the ODE. Now, calling it one thing, you can call, you can call a frog a cow, but it doesn't make the frog the cow. It only makes it a frog if it's an actual frog. So, if it's 132 days, 132 days, that's the way I look at it, because it's part of the complaint procedure, it's even in the complaint procedure. Then we need to pull the whole appeal thing out of the complaint procedure if it's not part of the complaint procedure. If it's part of the complaint procedure, then it needs to be within 90 days. That's the way I look at it, but maybe the state, they do a lot of dumb stuff. We're going to talk about their dumb stuff later, so, I don't know.
I think that the other board members agree with our general counsel, and that's the way we'll move forward, Steve.
Well, I don't know if all of the board members do. Okay, I'll continue on here then, thank you. I don't understand where it tells what goes through this complaint procedure and what is kicked to the HR department. Now, I talked to Sean, who's the HR director, and he gave me a pretty good explanation of what he believes it is. I don't see it here. I also don't see anything that talks about how you get into this complaint process. In other words, if it's misconduct by the teacher, is what, that's the word that's used here? Is there a definition of what that is someplace? Because misconduct, if that teacher is not giving homework, and I'm a parent, I see that as misconduct, say. If that teacher does A, I see it as misconduct, so does that mean everything that's seen as misconduct goes to the HR department? In which case, you, this complaint procedure wouldn't have any, anything to do with teachers?
You know, I specifically remember going through this at the last one and the one before that, but if you want to go through it again and hear it, then that's, then let's do it again.
I would like to go through it again, because I certainly wasn't satisfied with the question that we had last time.
Third time, we'll go through it.
Well, but the last time, the last couple of times, what I did, I asked about it and said it's not correct, and then it comes back and it's still not correct, so, it's not really going through it a third time. It's just going through it.
So, I think one of the things that we needed to achieve in this complaint process is balancing accessibility and transparency for people who have complaints with the district, with also the processes that our employees are entitled to, that include privacy and the processes that are laid out, and in some cases, in our collective bargaining agreements. So, it is a, there is some balancing act between the two of those, and in the, and last, when we talked last time, we used exactly the example of a teacher who, so a parent, who believes that their child is not getting adequate homework. And so, that parent brings the complaint through this process, and at some, and that's an appropriate complaint for this process. If during that, that, the investigation of that, it turns out that the teacher is in fact engaged in some kind of what HR would look at as misconduct, and there's probably not a definition for that that's going to be crystal clear in every single circumstance, you need to look at that. But let's say you have a teacher who is refusing a directive to assign homework, or is unfairly assigning homework to this one student. That might then be resolved through an HR process. That's not a process that should be, that teacher is entitled to certain privacy around that process, it's not a process that would normally go through this. The, but the concern about the homework would still move forward under this, under this complaint process. So, the parent is still going to be able to have his or her concerns resolved. It's a little complex. It's a complex organization, and it's balancing what those rights, what those, you know, those processes are. So, we have tried to lay that out, it's in number four, and it's not, it isn't designed to hide every single complaint behind an HR process. It's designed to both be responsive to complaints and provide processes that are appropriate for our employees.
And if it goes to the HR department, and I'm a parent, let's say the parent's, the child comes home and complains that the teacher slapped my child, then how does that, how, that would automatically go to the HR department, because that was genuinely misconduct supposedly. How would I, as a teacher, I mean, as a parent, then find out that what took place?
So, I'm going to take the liberty of saying again that I'm not really comfortable with the example of a teacher slapping a child. Our teachers don't by and large slap children, and I think that that's, so I'm going to use a different example.
We have teachers that have done things that are pretty bad.
Well, so, but in any event, there are certain, there are certain challenges for parents when they can't know all of the details about what either happens in a disciplinary function to either a teacher, or we have the same thing with parents who are, want to know the discipline that happens against students who might have hurt their student. Sometimes you don't get to know. What we need to tell those parents is, we have followed our processes and procedures, but specifically, what we did, you know, with that teacher is not information that parents, you know, will always get to know. So, and we understand that's frustrating. More?
Yes, no, I have more.
Okay.
Somebody else want to go for a while?
We're all ready to vote on this.
Oh, well, I'll just continue on then. I think that the ombudsman should be directly under the superintendent, and would have then a straight line to the superintendent, whereas, and then a dotted line to the head of the public affairs.
That's really not part of this policy, so that's out of order, Steve.
Well, it is, it talks about it right in here.
It talks about the ombudsman, but that's not...
Yeah, it talks about that who it reports to and stuff. Well, it talks about who the ombudsman reports to here, and doesn't.
Do you have more?
Okay, well, I guess I'll have to make a motion on that one, my internet, okay?
There aren't no motions.
Take me a second. If on section step one D, when applicable, the ombudsman will consult with district legal counsel regarding pertinent district policy and relevant state and federal laws, would that, does that create a new complaint then, that then goes back and starts over part of it? Would you then have two complaints?
Oh, no, no, that's just saying that...
All right.
I'm accessible to the ombudsman.
Review, appeal, okay. Checking to see if I've asked all my questions. I've asked all my questions, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Make a motion? About, why don't we just, let me make a motion that has to do with this policy.
Just wait a second, how's that? Just hang on. Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 4985. I'm not quite sure where you want to...
I guess I make an amendment. Okay? Something, I'll move to have, I'll make an amendment to the motion.
Go ahead.
Move that the ombudsman, that it be included in the policy that the ombudsman reports directly to the superintendent.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Comments?
So, question of clarification, so, in the policy itself, the fourth paragraph, so it says, "The district has an ombudsman whose role is to assist in dispute resolution and help ensure the complaint process is accessible to the public. The ombudsman also makes recommendations directly with the superintendent regarding areas of improvement for the district." Is there a, is there a specific change to that wording, or are you talking about?
And maybe, maybe this is not foreign to do this, but it, I think it was best practices to have the ombudsman report directly to the superintendent, and instead we have a dotted line. My preference would be a straight line to the superintendent and a dotted line to the PR department.
I'm going to just correct community involvement in public affairs, which is substantively different than PR department, so, community involvement, public, yes.
Superintendent would be the supervisor, not the public...
No, no, I'm just saying that when we're, it's located in the Office of Community Involvement and Public Affairs.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm going to say, for me, I mean, I think we've heard different perspectives on this. I think I'm comfortable with the way it's written, and again, in the context of, we're going to just report on implementation of this, and all aspects of this, so again, if it comes out that the, there's going to be an opportunity for us to be reviewing this, and if it comes out that, for whatever reason, the ombudsman does not have that access to the superintendent, that's going to come out, and we can adjust that. So, that's why I would like, after having reviewed this extensively and appreciate all the perspectives we've heard, that I want to move forward with this as presented.
Other comments? All those in favor of the amendment to have the superintendent, or have the ombudsman report directly to the superintendent, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
No.
Okay, motion fails.
Another amendment?
Well, you have to state that you have an amendment.
I just did, I just did. I said I have another amendment, that's what I was saying.
Go ahead.
No word amendment.
Go ahead.
Move that the one-year timeline for limitation for filing complaint be changed to two years?
Can you say, state where that is in the policy, so that we can follow along with you?
Wait one minute.
I think it's under additional provisions on page five. It's number two.
Thank you.
And may I just, well, I'll say no.
So do we have a second? Okay, the motion fails for lack of a second. Are we ready to vote?
I've got a couple more amendments. Move that the, okay, move that the entire process be redrawn to meet state law so that the whole process gets done in 90 days.
Second, is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Discussion?
So.
Discussion.
So my, my understanding of this is that after the final decision of the superintendent, at that point, folks have the option either to appeal to ODE or to seek an appeal, appeal from the board. So that's, that's the timing, as I understand it. And then if the board did agree to hear and do an appeal, and they still were not satisfied with that, then they would go to ODE. But I think the ODE piece is after that step two, is that correct?
Yes. So it's written so that people have the choice to either go, exactly. Go to ODE after the superintendent's final decision, or if the board took an appeal, then after the board rendered a decision.
Right. Because at that point, as soon as the superintendent made a decision that you didn't, you weren't satisfied with, you could immediately go to the state.
It's a final decision.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to, say it again, Steve. Your amendment?
If you have it.
Could you read the amendment for us, Ms. Hewson?
That the entire process be redrawn to meet state law so that the process can be completed in 90 days.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. Are we ready to vote?
I think so. Let me, just a second, yeah. Yes, that's enough.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think anything's going to pass here.
Thank you, everybody, for all that discussion. The board will now vote on resolution 4985. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 4985 is approved by a vote of five to one, with student representative Joswell voting.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Ms. Patterson. Okay. Now, we will have a presentation by the superintendent's advisory committee on enrollment and transfer. And I'm going to turn to my colleagues and say, are there people who, shall we listen to the public comment ahead of time, or?
So three people have arrived.
Okay.
Lots of time later.
Right.
I think, or four.
Before?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do a public comment now, and then we will have the presentation after that, for the people who signed up earlier. So, just briefly, our rules around public comment is, before you start, would you please state your name and spell your last name for the record? You have about three minutes to speak. There's a green light that will go on in front of you when you start speaking. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will go on, and when the red light goes on and you hear the buzzer sound, that means your time is up, and we ask that you wrap up whatever you're saying. So thank you very much for being here to present to us tonight.
My name is Yoji Matsushima. Y-O-J-I, last name Matsushima, M-A-T-S-U-S-H-I-M-A. I spent more than three and a half years behind barbed wire, along with 120,000 Japanese who were singled out. As a Richmond grandparent, please do not single out Richmond for the changes in enrollment process, lottery, or sibling entrance preference. Singling out our one immersion school program is a case of profiling and lack of even-handed decisions. My father was arrested December the 11th, 1941, and jailed in Portland by the FBI. He was interned in Montana, Louisiana, and Santa Fe, New Mexico. On February 19th, 1942, Franklin Delano Roosevelt signed Executive Order 9066 that incarcerated 120,000 Japanese. My family had a number, 1-5-1-8-1. We were interned at the Pacific International Livestock Exposition, then six months later sent to Minidoka, Idaho. My family did not see my father for a year and a half until we were reunited at Alice Island, New York. From there, we were sent to Crystal City Family Internment Camp in Texas until April the 3rd, 1946, when we were released. The government did not intern the Germans or the Italians, only the Japanese. We were singled out, like Richmond's immersion program. I would like to yield the floor to Nick Callen.
Hey, my name is, my name is Nick Callen, K-A-L-L-E-N. I'm class of 2018. I graduated from both Richmond and Mount Tabor, and I'm still learning Japanese into high school. I'm the youngest of three, or I say that I'm the youngest of three because if sibling preference never existed at Richmond, I most likely would not have been able to share life-changing experiences with my brother and sister or gossip about the teachers. When I went to Hiroshima in eighth grade on a field trip, the, we learned a lot about the horrific accident of, well, not accident, but the horrific bombing of Hiroshima. The American side of the bombing, oh.
You can go ahead and finish your sentence.
All right, thank you. All right. Well, one thing I ask is how are the Japanese not counted as underserved when 60 years ago they were being bombed, put into camps, and relationally profiled by the very people who should be protecting them? Just think about that. Thank you.
Thank you both.
My last name is Tam, T-A-M. I want to thank you tonight for letting me speak, and I wanted to begin with a little exercise by asking you if you, if anyone has ever been asked or told the following. You speak English really well. What are you? Is English your native language? Is your son adopted? The first three I just listed have been directed at me on numerous occasions over the years, and I purposely left off the racial epithets that children taunted me with at recess. The last question has been asked of my Caucasian husband about our kids, who look more like me than him. And so I ask, if these statements and questions made you cringe when you heard them, think about how they might have made me feel as a native, English-speaking, Japanese and Chinese-American. The Sackett recommendations are noble. They are trying to right the wrongs, I truly believe that. What needs to be recognized, however, is that Richmond is an entry point for the Japanese immersion program, which spans K through 12. It is not a focus option school. Richmond and the entire Japanese program is an exemplary model of dual-language immersion, as defined on the PPS website. A dual-language immersion, DLI, program, is a core educational language program that offers academic content in two languages, English and a partner language. PPS has DLI programs in four languages, Spanish, Japanese, Mandarin Chinese, and Russian. The goal is for all students to become bilingual and biliterate while achieving at a high academic level and developing deeper cultural awareness. If you take in all aspects of Richmond, you will see incredible learning in both academics and cultural awareness taking place. When I applied to Richmond and the Japanese immersion program, I wanted to for selfish reasons. I wanted to be part of a community where I felt I belonged. I wanted my half Asian children to go to a school where they were not the only Asians or even one of a small handful of multi-ethnic students in the classroom. I wanted to learn more about and become involved in a community that I could relate to. Richmond and the Japanese immersion program has offered that and more for me and my family. I have finally found my community. Having never had an Asian teacher growing up and many times being the only minority in the classroom, I feel lucky and joy that my children are able to experience the diversity that Richmond offers, and which continues to become more diverse as the program moves on to Mount Tabor and Grant. Now I ask a few more questions. What other school or program in PPS or the greater Portland area celebrates Japanese culture more than Richmond and the Japanese immersion program? Where else could I have met another parent whose father was in the same internment camp as my mother? How can taking away sibling preference and breaking up families make a program, especially a DLI program, stronger? Where is the educational model that states separating siblings is the best practice for any school? And I wonder when the Japanese immersion program will finally be fully accepted and supported and seen for what it is truly, what it truly is, a diverse and culturally rich community of dedicated and passionate families?
Hi, my name is Sarah DeLuca, D-E-L-U-C-A. I am the PTA president at Richmond, and I'm joined here tonight by teachers, families, and parents that fill your foyer. We believe in greater equity in our schools, but we have several concerns when we read the Sackett report. We are asking you to slow down and fully assess if these recommendations are the most effective to address equity in our schools. The district's stated goal for choice is to support students in achieving their very highest educational and personal potential, to inspire them an enduring love for learning, and prepare them to contribute as citizens of a diverse, multicultural, and international community. This is the foundation Richmond was built on. The school accomplishes this goal through language and cultural curriculum that nurtures a global worldview and fosters a diversity of thought. It's unrealistic to think that each school's diversity profile will look identical, but it should be noted that Richmond does serve a population that's approximately 60% white and 40% who identify as non-white. At a time when the district wants to build trust, particularly among diverse populations, putting policies in place that would undermine a successful school program serving a population of which 40% identify as diverse or non-white seems counterintuitive. Treating the immersion programs differently sends a message that the language and diversity at Richmond School is less valued than other languages and other forms of diversity. Especially in a language program, sibling preference is a critical aspect for language learning. It's not just a logistical convenience for the families. I'd like to read you a quote from the American Council on Immersion Education. Younger siblings want to do what their older siblings do, and their expectations of school are based on their siblings' experiences. When kindergartners bring home their homework and play their music cassettes, their preschool siblings start learning the immersion language too. As the siblings get older, they practice their second language with each other. In short, immersion is a family experience, a family commitment, and a family investment. Sibling preference keeps families together and promotes program stability, strength, and success. Another concern for us, especially in an immersion program, is attrition. If we lose kids in the upper grades because their younger siblings can't get in, we cannot replace them. It would limit Richmond's ability to continue its teaching model that relies on team teaching and therefore full classrooms. A quality program that was built over the last 25 years would be significantly diluted. We respect the complexity of solving the problem before you, that of greater equity in our schools. We ask you to respect its complexity as well. Consult with the groups directly impacted by potential policy change. Do not discount the voice of Japanese Americans. Evaluate unintended negative consequences more thoroughly, especially in a language immersion program. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you to all those who testified, and I also want to thank all of you who have sent us emails and letters. We're getting those, many of those, and so we appreciate hearing your thoughts and concerns through email as well. Superintendent Smith, you want to go ahead and introduce the Sackett group?
I do, and many of you have been following both the charge given to Sackett, so the superintendent's advisory committee on enrollment and transfer, which was given to this group in March of 2013. Many of this committee have actually been together since 2008 and have taken, the group has become educated about how our enrollment and transfer policies work, what the depth of them are, how our lottery works, enrollment patterns in the district, and just looking at trends over time and the impact of, like, no child left behind layered on top of what was a, a choice system. So they've actually spent a bunch of time actually delving deeply into understanding how our system works. Their charge in March of 2013 was to align our racial educational equity policy with our enrollment and transfer policies, because policies that are created in one moment in time to solve one set of problems, you then evolve them over time. They have some unintended consequences. Sometimes you're achieving what you want to achieve. We asked them to take a look at what was actually happening in our system now and to, to make some recommendations to me about how we do that alignment. So they came in June and did a report to make visible just the work in progress. This past week, they came and did a presentation to me about their initial set of recommendations. They also did a presentation to my direct reports and to the senior directors who supervise clusters. So like, I've had them in my possession for less than a week, but I had the opportunity to hear deeply from the group of what their thought process had been as they went through. They've also done a lot of listening to stakeholder groups and know that this is now in my court. I will come back on the 18th with a timeline of how I respond. Many of these recommendations have resource implications, they have complexity about how you would operationalize them, so some of that is what I now have to take into account. If, in fact, we have policy recommendations that emerge from this, and particularly if we have ones that will end up impacting the next enrollment and transfer cycle, what will happen is I will come back with an amended policy to the board that will be, then go through the board's public process with a first reading, opportunity for testimony. So there, you're not going to have a rush-through of anything here. This is part of the deliberation process, so just know that. You, it would end up going through as a, you would see the amended, recommendations of amended policy. The board would have a first reading. You'd end up with a, a period of time where you'd get to look at it and haggle over what it is, come back, testify before the board. It would come back for a second reading. So there's, we're still in public process, so just know that as we have this large audience of people here to hear this tonight. What will happen tonight is Sackett is doing their presentation now in front of the audience and publicly for the board to allow the board to ask clarifying questions and to hear some of the process that Sackett went through directly. But I am still the listening party because the recommendations are to me. So this will be a basically opportunity for the board to get clarifying questions and for the public to hear the work of Sackett. So I'm going to introduce Jason Trombley, who is one of the co-chairs of Sackett. But I'd also like to ask all of the members of the superintendent advisory committee on enrollment and transfer to please stand and let us just recognize you and say thank you for the work that you've just completed. Sackett members, please stand. And Jason Trombley, who is one of the co-chairs, is going to walk us through the recommendations tonight. Allison Burnett, who is not with us tonight, was the other co-chair. And I want to just say at the front end of this, this group has been working really intensively to get their head around very complex issues. They all came in, I've watched all of them change their thinking and change each other's thinking as they've wrestled with these things, and their real intent is how we're giving equity of access to kids, to quality programming in our district regardless of where they live. So with that, I will turn it over to Jason and let him lead us through your recommendations.
Point of order.
Go ahead, what is it?
Mr. Trombley?
The recommendations of SACET are coming to the superintendent, and part of tonight, the purpose of tonight is to make publicly visible the work of this committee directly from the committee members, and to allow the board to make, ask clarifying questions. So the recommendations are not being made to the board at this time. No recommendation is being made to the board at this time. You are getting to hear the work of this committee who's making recommendations to the superintendent.
So, I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting until this is over, because I believe that it's, that it's created an illegal situation that we're not recognizing.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Thank you, Jason, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Chernels, and Superintendent Smith. I'm on behalf of SACET, it's an honor to be here to provide you all with an update on the work that we've done since June in our preliminary report, and to share with you the preliminary, the official recommendations that we submitted to the superintendent last Tuesday night. Before we go ahead and get started with the presentation, I just wanted to quickly, for the board and the general public at large, to reintroduce the committee membership and our various affiliations that we bring to the table. So, again, a number of our members are here tonight, but some aren't for various reasons, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. First is Scott Bailey from the Grant Cluster. Second is Talitha Benjamin from the dual-enrolled Jefferson and Madison Cluster. Allison Burnett, who, from the Grant Cluster and current SACET coacher, who is also an education assistant at Jackson Middle School. Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar, who comes from the dual-enrolled Jefferson-Roosevelt Cluster. Brenna Hurwitz from the Wilson Cluster, who's also on staff at the Learning Center at West Sylvan Middle School and a former graduate education professor at Lewis and Clark College. Nicole Markwell of the Madison Cluster. Shannon McClure from the Jefferson Cluster, who was a former teacher at Sitton and James-John Schools, who is now also on staff at MLC. Rita Moore from the Roosevelt Cluster. Nisha Saxena from the Grant Cluster. Callie Thorne-Ladd from the Roosevelt Cluster, both a parent and former educator. Myself, Jason Trombley from the Roosevelt Cluster. And Neely Wells from the Franklin Cluster, who is also a current Benson High School parent. So with that, I look forward to presenting the recommendations that we presented to the superintendent for consideration. Okay, so the goals for tonight's presentation are threefold, is that we are going to officially walk through the recommendations that we presented to the superintendent, and we'll be informing you, the board, tonight on. We're also going to be hoping to explain the rationale and intent behind the recommendations, and what we hope will achieve by the rationale that we have set forth. And hopefully, and continuing from tonight, is to engage in a two-way dialogue between SACET members and the board around both the implications and both the potential implementation of these recommendations. So, following our board presentation in June, I just wanted to walk through the work that we have continued to do. SACET met an additional 13 times to complete this phase of work. In addition to our listening session with API families and the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, we convened three additional listening sessions with different families in historically underserved communities. First was African-American families with support from the Portland African-American Leadership Forum, or PALF, and Self Enhancement, Inc., or SEI. Latino families with support from Latino Network. And third, Native American families with support from the Native American Youth and Family Center, or NAIA. In addition, we made it a point to deepen our understanding of the current enrollment, current system of enrollment and transfer through both data presentations, and reviewed various data simulations that tested the recommendations that we potentially forwarded to the superintendent. And fourth, but equally important, is that throughout our deliberation process, we consciously applied all of the racial equity lens questions throughout all components of our work, so hopefully that our recommendations are, clearly incorporate the different impacts in various communities, especially historically underserved communities. So with that, we'll go ahead and talk through what the potential recommendations are. First is recommendations that are addressing neighborhood schools. Our proposed recommendation one is what we're calling ending neighborhood-to-neighborhood lottery transfers. We view this recommendation as a necessary first step to stabilize enrollment as well as financial resources at neighborhood schools. This recommendation, we think, will also eliminate randomness of the applicant process. Also, in addition to that, an enhanced petition process, which is, which will become recommendation two, provides the district an opportunity to understand the family's intent to transfer either into or out of a particular school. And third, over the past three years, there's been a relative decrease in the number of applications throughout this mechanism, but this mechanism has resulted in a disproportionate impact on schools serving historically underserved communities. And as you'll see through each recommendation, we did a vote to whether or not to approve or reject each recommendation, and this recommendation, as you see, was adopted 12 to zero unanimously. Recommendation two is strengthening the petition process. As previously noted above, this will give the district an opportunity to understand the family's intent as to why they're choosing to leave or enter into a particular school. We'd also contend that this is an opportunity as well to, that the process can be more responsive to correcting historic inequities, and we also see this as a significant first step to not only strengthening this process, but it can also be aligned with the Office of the Ombudsman and Parent Complete Procedure that can soon become a potential early warning system to identify hotspot schools and potentially implement relevant corrective action. So next is our series of recommendations that address the variety in the portfolio of focus option schools. First and foremost, that we have found throughout the course of our work is that Portland Public Schools has not followed its own policy, which is the education options policy regarding focus option schools. So throughout the course of work, we worked to figure out what schools in this section that we were going to potentially address with the potential recommendations that we're presenting. Regional Dual Language Arts Immersion Programs, schools that have a district-wide applicant pool, which include Richmond Japanese Immersion, Creative Science School, Divisionary Arts, Odyssey, and Winter Haven, and also schools that have unique learning opportunities within guaranteed neighborhood zone and limited transfer slots, which are Buckman Arts and Sunnyside Environmental. So just to clarify, so for our proposed recommendations three, four, and five, this kind of clarifies the scope as to which set of, which recommendation applies to which portfolio of schools within the focus option portfolio. So with, as I stated before, that we recognized that the district hadn't followed significant components of the existing education options policy, and there were a number of key points within there that we recognized as opportunities that we could solve through our proposed recommendations. So, as we currently understand, the education options policy calls for the following items: that it will, quote, "meet the different learning needs and educational interests of all students. The district shall facilitate the citing of educational options to maximize the potential for cooperation and sharing of resources among different educational options and for distribution of options throughout the district." And third, that focus options actively seek to create a sense of community in which racial, economic, and cultural isolation are reduced. Now, given at least three of these components within the existing policy, we think that our proposed recommendation three, which is implementation of a quality review process for focus option schools, will help put the district in alignment between its portfolio and the existing policy. So the policy, our proposed recommendation calls for three components. One, to establish a clear rationale and benchmarks for focus option schools. Two, to establish an evaluation and support system for focus option schools. And third, to review the focus option locations as part of the upcoming district-wide boundary review process. And this recommendation three was adopted 12 to zero unanimously. Recommendation four, which is addressing access to dual-language immersion programs, that the committee strongly recognizes the benefit of dual-language immersion programs in that it's a significant education strategy that improves achievement outcomes at all levels for not only just mainstream students, but especially students who are historically underserved or ELL students. So within that, this particular recommendation, we also adopted 12 to zero unanimously in support. Then in addition to that, I just wanted also quickly note that, as part of this recommendation, that in order for this recommendation to go through, we suggested that effective outreach must occur to all students, including historically underserved populations, so that as these programs continue to grow, recognizing that these programs are available to all students, not just the students who have the ability to know about them. Next up is recommendation five. So, within the existing education options policy, it notes that, quote, "promote equity and the diversity in the admission of students to educational options and minimize barriers to participation in educational options." To effectively implement the education options policy, SACET is recommending recommendation five, which is modifications to the focus option lottery system. First, that the lottery prioritizes to balance schools by income and geography and recognize the importance of co-enrolled siblings. First, that slots, that there will be slots reserved for economically disadvantaged students equal to district numbers. Should there be more applicants than available slots, a two-part mechanism will go into effect. One, equal numbers of students will be selected from the range of high school clusters represented in the applicant pool. And two, that the sibling preference will then change to a weight which will then be applied to each geographic grouping. Following that, the remaining slots that are available will be evenly distributed by high school region. Again, should there be additional applicants than slots available, the following mechanism is implemented. Co-enrolled siblings will be selected first within each grouping of students by high school region. Two, in the case that there are more co-enrolled siblings than slots available by high school region, the applicant's lottery number will be used as a final tiebreaker. Should there be more non-sibling applicants than remaining slots by high school region, so again, this is after the siblings are taken in this part of the lottery structure, the lottery number that is assigned to that particular student will be used as the final tiebreaker. Part two of this recommendation is student supports to improve equity of access to focus option schools. This includes focusing on investments such as providing transportation for students that need these schools, increasing the availability of the application in multiple languages, languages both in paper and online, and also leveraging community agents as well as its partnerships to facilitate outreach to historically underserved communities to increase the diversity of the application pool. This recommendation was adopted 10 to two with two minority viewpoints. One, that focus option schools and the proposed lottery changes did not undergo the same scrutiny as other facets of the enrollment and transfer system. And second, there is no reason for families with multiple children to have privilege when applying for lottery slots over families with one child. Recommendation six is recommendations addressing students receiving special education services, or supporting students receiving special education services. Part one of this recommendation is ensuring the continuity of students assigned away from their neighborhood schools for special education services to ensure that students placed can stay at their school through the highest grade offered, as well as their siblings. Two, move toward cluster-based and eventually neighborhood-school-based programming for all students receiving special education services. And part three is to clarify the policy language around students, as well as students having the ability of the right to remain to the highest grade in their neighborhood school. This recommendation as well was adopted 12 to zero unanimously in support by the committee. And so, after looking through each recommendations, the committee did one final vote to whether or not to adopt or reject the full recommendation package to submit to the superintendent, and the full recommendation package was approved 12 to zero unanimously. And so with that, Superintendent Smith, thank you for allowing us a chance to present to the board, and that the board, the committee looks forward to taking your questions. So, I will do my best to act as a traffic cop, and recognizing that I've got a huge brain trust right here, so I'll try and talk to him, but defer to my colleagues to answer a lot of the questions as well.
Okay. The board members have questions? No questions? Director Curler?
Sure. During your research and great work, did you, to what extent have there been models out there that other districts have dealt with these inequities that we could learn from?
So, off the top of my head, there were two, at least two districts that come to mind that we did a very brief look at, one being the recent process done with the school district in Washington DC, and the second one in Chicago, Illinois. One of the things that Chicago has implemented over the years is that what they've done to balance access through their lottery and dealing with the increase in diversity in their student body, both economics and by race and other historically underserved communities, is that they have created four different sense of tiers that take into account a number of factors like families' economic status, families' education level, and they've done that overlaying with the way that the city is laid out demographically through the census data. So what they've done every 10 years is leverage the census data, determine one of four tiers that students and communities fall into as a way to balance issues around geography, race, and economic status, and the way that students have the ability to access schools through the lottery mechanisms that the Chicago Public Schools has.
And it's, and are we modeling, your recommendations are somewhat modeling that?
So, I don't think that we tested that specific level of geographic, what we, what the modeling did is we pulled data from students who identified as either free and reduced meals, or identified as students who were enrolling in Head Start for Pre-Kindergarten. That's, there's an opportunity where others, districts like Chicago who have done that, in fact, when it was in my conversation with Judy Brennan this evening, is that after this process is complete for a long-term systems approach, that she was going to reach out to the folks over in Chicago to see how, what their implementation process has been. So, while recommendations are a first step in recognizing that the diversity of our community is growing both economically and by race, that there are other systems that have successfully incorporated this to best ensure that access for all students have the ability to access really strong programs. So, there are other schools and districts that are working on it, so I think we have an opportunity to learn from others who've done some good work.
Jason, I, that's something?
Yeah.
So, we also have to look beyond free and reduced lunch, because we have enough schools in the district now, I think about 20 schools where all students are receiving free lunch, and so people are not necessarily having to fill out the free and reduced lunch, so it's no longer going to be a good measure of, of justice.
Director Martin?
I have more of a comment to make, and, you know, my, my process, and I think the board process at this point, will be to provide some feedback, provide sort of some thinking on this, and also maybe offer some input to the superintendent as she prepares to make her recommendation to the board. But I do want to provide a little bit of the historical context for why we're at the place where we're at right now, and it wasn't too long ago that, as we were looking at enrollment, rebalancing essentially cluster by cluster, and recognizing that, in fact, we were doing damage to certain portions of our city. I see some hands waving, they are in those portions of the city that were being historically damaged, but we were doing that damage over and over again on a onesie-twosie basis, and we began to realize that, in fact, the policies, or the practices we were putting forward were not consistent with the policies that we had most recently passed, primarily the racial educational equity policy. So we looked at this as a, how do we take, how do we take a district-wide approach to this and incorporate our racial educational equity policy in that process? And that is no small task, by the way, and I want to thank those who have participated in this over a long period of time and done the legwork and done the sort of, the laborious process of diving deep into this. So, we have some work to do to ask some further questions and build, build our own knowledge on what you all have already learned, but I wanted to recognize the reason why we ventured into this in the first place, and also thank you all for the work that you've done.
Director Bellisle?
I have a question, maybe Jason you can answer, or I'm hoping to hear from some other members of the committee. But first, let me also thank the committee for spending the time and the energy of putting into this, and going over how many models. We know, of course, it's not exhaustive, but you guys have done yeoman's work over the past 18 months to figure out as many unintentional consequences, or what would this look like, and to get actual data to do this, so thank you for that. I'm interested, right now we have a houseful of folks from Richmond who are concerned about sibling, sibling preference, but I imagine as more word gets out about this, we're going to hear a lot about our, from our community about neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers. And I'd like to hear, I've heard, I've seen and heard a couple of different statistics about how many of our families are not attending their neighborhood school, and I'm curious to hear, because my understanding is there are going to be some...
I have a question, maybe Jason, you can answer it, or I'm hoping to hear from some other members of the committee. But first, let me also thank the committee for spending the time and the energy of putting into this and going over how many models. We know, of course, it's not exhaustive, but you guys have done yeoman's work over the past 18 months to figure out as many unintentional consequences or what would this look like and to get actual data to do this. So thank you for that. I, I'm interested, right now, we have a houseful of folks from Richmond who are concerned about sibling, sibling preference, but I imagine as more word gets out about this, we're going to hear a lot about our, from our community about neighborhood to neighborhood transfers. And I'd like to hear, I've heard, I've seen and heard a couple of different statistics about how many of our families are not attending their neighborhood school. And I'm curious to hear, because my understanding is there are going to be some, some schools will feel like they're winners and some schools will feel like they're losers. How do you see that playing out and can you talk to me a little bit about your thinking or what you've learned about why that's a recommendation?
I'm glad you asked that question because we did spend a good deal of time looking at that particular aspect, but I want, I want to say something before I answer your question. I am very proud to be here tonight as a member of this committee making this presentation. And the reason I can say that is because I've been here twice before, and the last time I reminded you that I had been here and I didn't see any results. So I, I feel in fairness that I'm really appreciative of the fact that you have read this and you understand how much we put into coming to these recommendations. But one of the things in answer to your question that we did do is we looked at what could happen if all of the kids who transferred out of their neighborhood schools were returned to their neighborhood schools, what that would look like and how that would affect the resources for those neighborhood schools to be able to offer quality of education in those schools to strengthen, that, that fell in with our general attitude that we believe that strengthening our neighborhood schools is the real solution, okay? And so when we looked at it in that way and you could see the difference, for some schools, it was a tremendous difference, and I can't even remember what the exact percentage was of, Jason, do you recall for the schools that had the highest number of kids who were transported out?
No.
That's what I thought, about 20%.
Twenty to over thirty, yeah.
And part, and part of what I wish that the board could do and that all these people here in this audience who have formed opinions would be able to accept and acknowledge is the depth of the work of this committee. Because we went back and we use history information to bring us to where we are and then to look at where we could go. That's very important and it's truly going to be important to you as board members to be able to not be swayed by signs, T-shirts, applause, or whatever comes as an attempt to sway your, your decision. Because it's really important for us to get away from I and my, for people wanting decisions to be made as to how they affect them or their families personally without considering we and our. And that's what we have to do. We have to be invested, and this committee throughout its deliberation was invested in for the good of the district, the total district, and for everyone within the district. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you about my history as a minority person because I grew up in the South and I was into that separate but unequal stuff. I don't carry that baggage on my back anymore. All I'm doing is looking forward to how we can make changes that will benefit everyone and we won't have any victims left. Thank you.
So I want to add an answer, but it's always tough to follow to Leitha. For me, as an alumnus of this school district, I was a beneficiary of using the transfer system at the high school level. I knew what the benefit was, is I got a world-class education at Lincoln High School that I believed and learned that I wasn't going to get in Roosevelt in the 90s. That's what everyone in my neighborhood middle school told me. So the benefit was I got a world-class education, but I know what the emotional effect is, which means as a person who's the first in the family to go to college and both parents work in two hours from at least 4:00 AM to midnight, that your job is to pull yourself up. And this, what is the sad reality is that I think what is fundamentally important here for the district is that you're in a real moment of pivoting, is that from a decade of revenue decline and enrollment dropping, that we know things are starting to turn around. What I think is also important is that it's important to really think about first and foremost that how you govern students at 47,000 students in capacity is an indicator of how you're going to govern it 56, 15 to 20 years from now. Additionally, you have a lot of programs that are working, but not in enough locations throughout the city. So I think what's also important through our recommendations that equitable programming isn't happening. And so one of the real tensions that we think about when families like myself use the transfer system was there was a program somewhere else and there's a lot of baggage we carry on with that. So our core belief that we adopted throughout this process was what does it take to really have a strong belief in that the core of the system is strong and strategic neighborhood schools that serve the community? So basing all of our recommendations on around that, that kicks off a whole series of conversations around, you know, what are the programs that are working? Is it STEM, dual-language immersion that we know is not only benefiting all students, but it's closing the achievement gap? So all of these recommendations kickoff, but kickoff in a whole series of new conversations that you have to happen, but you're also doing it in the context of enrollment growth, you're doing it in the context of district-wide boundary review. So you once and finally have all of the systems that haven't talked to each other for a long time, finally realizing they have to talk to each other. So this is a moment for the board to really put all of that together to show the communities that when you say you're going to have 57,000 students of enrollment 15 years ago, 15 years from now, the assumption is all of those families are going to send their kids here to a school in this system, not charter, not send their kids to someplace outside the district or private. You're in a moment where you can really make the case and what it's going to take.
Yeah.
I just want to mention that we have experience at this point in the benefits of limiting neighborhood to neighborhood transfers in the high schools. If you, if you remember in, well, in 2010, the policy changed or the practice changed. Prior to that, high schools, Roosevelt was hemorrhaging students. And by cutting off the neighborhood to neighborhood transfers at the high school level, you've allowed Madison and Roosevelt to stabilize. They, Roosevelt has now made up, they, they lost something on the order of 20% of their enrollment, they've now made that deficit up plus. They are, you know, Roosevelt's rising, and none of that would have been possible if the transfer system had remained in place. The other thing I wanted to mention was we talked quite a lot in the committee about the importance of recognizing that a lot of these changes, especially the neighborhood to neighborhood transfer changes, have to be predicated on the district-wide boundary review. And because some school catchment areas are simply too small to support the kind of school enrollment that's necessary. Others are just huge, and so you've got situations of over enrollment and under enrollment, and so we're, we're advocating that you look at our recommendations in tandem with the district-wide boundary.
Let me just say one quick thing. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I was, I sometimes differentiate with my peers in terms of feeling like there is, there is something positive about a degree of choice in the system of education and that I see a value with neighborhood schools, I see a value with focus option schools and some of the other options, and I think that's what makes the PPS system strong. What I saw though was data that showed us that when you look at who is transferring by lottery, it's mostly white, mostly middle-class families, and they're transferring out of schools that are most predominantly kids of color, predominantly often African-American, Latino schools. So that's a problem to me, and having a system that reinforces that really doesn't get to the equity policy that I think PPS stands for. So the idea of ensuring that those neighborhood schools are going to get more resources and be supported is very important. I think one thing though that we did underscore in our report is that that's just part of the issue and that more work needs to be done to truly strengthen all schools to ensure that all students succeed in those schools, because we do have some neighborhood schools that have resources and all children are not succeeding. So we recognize that this is one step, but we think it's a very important step to getting us to where we need to be.
Okay. How about board, do we have board questions?
Yeah.
Director Kurler?
Is anybody here from the minority vote on Recommendation Five? And I'd, I'd love to hear from you.
So I'm on the way, other side of the continuum of that, so this is sort of an awkward place to be. I, I, I think that sibling preference for, unless it's tied to historically underserved families, I don't see the sense of sibling preference because what it does is privilege some families over other families, meaning families with one child have a different level of hope to get into a school than families with multiple children.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Now I can't even walk out the door safely.
Maybe this will help you walk out the door safely. So the, we have a room full of people who feel like they've been singled out, and I, I don't, Jason, maybe you can speak to that one way or the other? They're, they're here, I think, and I'd like to hear your response.
Sure.
So can I add on to that just a little bit, Tom?
Sure.
I was confused about why Richmond was in this group rather than in the immersion program.
So. So.
You're good.
Okay. So, yes, the Richmond folks are correct in terms of the district's definition of dual-language immersion. We defined a subset of that as a 50-50 dual-language immersion program where half the participants are native speakers of the immersion language and half are English, English, native English speakers. And it's those programs that have been shown to be so much more effective for kids who speak little or no English at home, that, that other ESL approaches just don't cut the mustard for those kids. So that's why we differentiated Richmond from the other dual-language immersion programs.
Would that be Ainsworth as well?
Yes.
I'm sure, do we have others?
Yeah, the one way.
Just those two, right?
Yeah.
Ainsworth and?
Because the whole, I mean, I think the board has had a number of discussions in really prioritizing that, that 50-50 two-way model as being a really high-leverage strategy for underserved students.
Can I add one thing to that? The other piece is because it's not a neighborhood school and other immersion programs are co-located with the community side, so this is a focus, this is a focus-only school and that the only entrance is based on a lottery application as opposed to neighborhood schools and with the targets we talked about, they're set aside for students in those communities. So that was a different part of the factor.
Others? Go ahead.
If, if these recommendations are, go through, do you, do you have a position or have you, has your committee talked about the notion of grandfathering in existing parents and families?
So that question, I think, has come up, but we, the committee, didn't take dedicated time to address that question. I think for the superintendent and the board considers that question, I think you'd want to look at what the racial equity impacts of that particular recommendation would be.
Others? Other questions from board members?
Yeah, so what we're discussing over here is that we did talk about that, and what we had talked about is, again, moving forward. So this was applying the racial educational equity policy, so this would impact future lotteries for students applying that racial equity lens. So not past students that are already in, but future enrollment of students. So when you refer to grandfathering, I think I hear two thoughts. One is what about the students that are already in a program? That's not what we're discussing. We're only talking about future applicants. Help clarify?
There's also the siblings, though.
That will be applying.
Yeah, so there's another nuance.
Right, and that's what I'm referencing is that the new weights would replace that preference, so the weights would be in place and that would be for all new applicants.
So just to be clear, you're recommending that existing families, families are not grandfathered in?
I'm going to tell you what I told the reporter who tried to get me to say something the other day. You're putting, you're putting your thing way ahead of the game because we haven't even gotten to the point of you're accepting these recommendations and we haven't discussed the whole notion of implementation. So when you ask us, what are we going to do? We don't have an answer for you. We're saying that we don't want to see our recommendations die and nothing happens, and I'm, I'm not going to be around three more years to come back here and find that you didn't do anything with this. We're saying to you that we're not aiming ourselves to be, you know, taking on families to destroy them or to hurt them, although some of what I heard tonight indicated that they weren't concerned about hurting other people. So let's just leave it to the point that we want you to talk about the bullet. You know, I'm not being disrespectful and I'd appreciate your letting me complete what I have to say, okay? What I'm suggesting is that if you can value the work that we've done and the recommendation, the heart of the recommendations that we have made, then we move on. We've got district boundary to, to deal with that's going to have some bearing on this, but there are some other things. And then when we talk about implementation, then we can begin to talk about where we start. But, you know, we, I don't want to see us five years from now trying to figure out how do we get past a, a family that, that keeps having children and wants them all to be in the same school. That, that's all I'm saying. I, I don't have any bias one way or the other, because if I, if I were, I would not have stayed involved with the school district for 33 years, since 1981. I have been working on things with the district and in neighborhood schools and elsewhere. That's all I'm saying. Stop being into the I and my mindset and get into the we and our.
Well, I mean, I'll just, I'm, I'm trying to be in the we and the our, which is one of the reasons why I asked that question, and I appreciate, yeah, thank you.
Director Atkins? So really just a comment more than a question, just an appreciation of this committee's work. So Director Regan, who wasn't able to be here tonight because of a family emergency, and I were the board liaisons to this committee, so we had the opportunity to attend a number of sessions here, the deliberations, and just really witness kind of the, the depth of the work and the dedication that you all have been putting in over these many, many months. So I just wanted to reiterate and highlight it, I mean, the, a couple of the key points of, just around that this is a necessary but not sufficient step and making some of these changes to make sure that we, that our enrollment and transfer policies and practices are in alignment with our racial educational equity policy. But I think that the piece that was coming up over and over in your all meetings and that is absolutely correct, as Eddie said it already again tonight, is just, but I think it's very, bears repeating, is just the, the issue of, of equity of opportunity and quality across the entire district is, is really huge. And a, and a key piece of that, to me, is that transparency around what is, what is offered, what is, what is the school climate and so forth, which gets back to what the PSU team was saying in terms of what the district needs to do in, in terms of having easily accessible, transparent, and complete information, because there's a perception and a reality in terms, there, there are multiple layers of perception and reality in terms of inequities and differences, and we need to be upfront about what those are so that when we hear someone saying, well, of course, I couldn't go to my neighborhood school, that should never be the statement. It should, maybe there'd be, I've visited my neighborhood school and I know that they offer X, Y, Z, and I have the specifics and I've made a different decision, but that's very different from saying I've heard it's, or I know that it's, anyway. So I think I'm really looking forward to hearing the superintendent's recommendations to us and then having a really good conversation amongst ourselves and with the public around these changes. But to me, this is really a test of our racial educational equity policy in terms of our dedication and commitment to it and our implementation of it and making it real in a, in a very important way throughout the district. Absolutely not the only thing that needs to happen, lots of other things need to happen as well, but again, I really appreciate your work, and I know that we're all going to be deliberating very carefully about this and we take it very seriously, but we also need to move forward as, as you said. we also need to move forward as, as you've said, we have a lot of work on our plate and a lot of important changes, um, to make in this district for kids. So, thank you again for all your hard work, um, really appreciate it. Appreciate everyone coming out here tonight and the folks who have shared their opinion. I know there's going to be lots more as we go, that's, um, which is great and look forward to continuing to hear from everybody. So, thanks so much.
Mina?
Yeah, I would just like to commend you guys as well and then also point out that earlier we said there was 40% non-white students at Richmond and that's really important and a huge part of diversity too is where the students economically are coming from. So this focus option of the slots really coming from different backgrounds is so important because that is such a dif, uh, important part of diversity in the classroom as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Blalow?
I just, um, I'm not going to thank you again, although I could, um, but I just want to say, uh, to our viewers and to our public tonight that, one, I appreciate having the difficult discussions. There are going to be really strong disagreements about these issues and unless we can bring our whole selves about being passionate, about being an advocate for our child as well as for our neighbors or for the person across town, um, I just, this is an opportunity for us. I think many of us know that the system isn't currently fair in whatever that looks like. Um, at the same time, it reminds me of a, I, I was just in a workshop last week, um, and I won't bore you the details about the exercise, but it required us to assemble different puzzles and different pieces, um, all aiming for the same goal, but we couldn't talk. Um, and in order to achieve it, one person would get theirs done and then they'd kind of sit back oftentimes and they'd be like, "Look, I'm done," not realizing that actually they had pieces that somebody else needed and you had to break it apart, switch it around, so that all of a sudden, eventually, after five, 10, 15, 20 minutes went by, you realized actually that every piece fit and every piece contributed to the puzzle. But if four people or if two people would have sat out and said, "Well, mine's done, I don't have to contribute again," um, the exercise would have never been complete. I believe we can build a system that works for all our families and it's just really important that we continue to show up and stay engaged, bring our passion, but also be respectful in this discussion. And so, um, I know that change brings a lot of tension, um, there's a lot of tension, whether it's through the decision-makers or in our community, change is hard. Um, I have two kids, I know splitting them up would be very difficult, it brings up a lot of tension in me, how am I going to get them there? So I just, I just want to re, reiterate a little bit what Ruth was saying is that we're taking these, um, decisions thoughtfully and intentionally at the same time. Please build with us the hope that we can create a system that works for all of our families, um, that we don't have to live in a district that, um, that isolates somebody or leaves somebody behind, so.
Others? No, me? Okay. Um, I, I also have a couple of questions and I just, uh, um, would say to begin with that, um, I'm the mother of three sons and we took full advantage of all the transfer opportunities. I'm in the Alameda-Bomont Grant neighborhood, I could have very well sent my children to those schools very happily, um, but instead took advantage of Buckman and was a founding parent at DaVinci, uh, to provide those opportunities for students. And I think that's why we, we need to think about our focus options and the value that they add to the district. So, um, I, I really feel strongly that language immersion is a great opportunity for us to help, uh, with our emerging bilinguals and with our other children who unfortunately don't have the opportunity to learn a foreign language in our school district right now. So, so I think that all these options that we have developed over time and some of them as a result of, um, of economic times where we've had to cut great things like the arts and some science and those kinds of things out of our schools, so we've created options and our students are going to those. So anyway, I think they're very valuable for us. Um, I had a question around, um, the ending of the neighborhood lottery, um, and the suggestion that we use a petition. Now, I come to this question because, um, well, my son started in Buckman probably 25 years ago, so it's quite a while ago, where there wasn't a petition, there wasn't, um, a lottery, it was just you showed up at the school and said you wanted to go there and, and you had an interview with the principal and we were in with the first one and the second one. And the third one, there was a lottery, so we took our chances with everybody else. Um, but now, a, and, and the reason that there was a lottery is because that was kind of unfair. I mean, we showed up, we knew about it and we showed up, but there were a lot of families who didn't know about it and even if they had known about it and they showed up, maybe they wouldn't have gotten in. So that didn't seem very fair and a lottery seemed like a much more fair way to let more people in, in, in an unbiased way. So my question really is around the use of a petition instead of a lottery, um, which I'm not opposed to, I just wondered what kind of criteria did you guys talk about that you would use in a petition, um, that we can use legally in a petition to make that determination? And who makes that determination? And how do you keep that objective? So, I see Scott over there, he looks like he's got an answer for me.
Yeah, let's be clear, we're not talking about replacing the lottery with a petition process. We have a current hardship petition process for parents who face difficulties, um, having their children in their neighborhood school. Maybe it's because they have to be at work over in a completely different direction and daycare is in the other direction, things like this. Or maybe there's something substantial going on at that school that is, puts, puts the child in danger, a bullying situation that doesn't go away, something like that. So we're, and our second recommendation is just to clarify...
We're not hearing you. Did you push the off button?
Okay.
So let me, let me ask a clarifying question while I try to figure out how to get that on again.
You can come on up, Scott.
Oh, come on up here. Uh, I thought that there was a specific recommendation in here that had to do with ending the neighborhood-to-neighborhood lottery.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Okay. So what do, if you're going to do a petition instead, my specific question is, what's a criteria in a petition?
So, there are current criteria now that the district uses around some kind of hardship has to be recognized. Our recommendation, recommendation two, is to really clarify what those criteria are, where they're strict, where there's some flexibility, and to mine that data in terms of who's applying for that transfer to see if you've got a flurry of folks who want to get out of school X to go somewhere else, that's a red flag that you should be paying attention to, to say, "Hey, things, something's happening that's not good at the school, we need to look into it."
So you're okay with the criteria that is currently there for petitioning for neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfer or do you want other criteria or, that's, that's really the question?
One thing that came up a lot, we, when we did our listening sessions over and over again, we heard communities, historically underserved communities say, "We know nothing about this lottery system."
Right.
"We don't have the time, we don't understand how it works." Um, so the petition process, there is hardship particularly for historically underserved communities in our schools when we have expulsion, expulsion rates that are four times more likely for African-American. But I have two kids, um, like, that's a hardship and you want to send your child to a school where that child might be profiled, so to speak. So there, there, I think we didn't dive deep into all of the different criteria, but we recognize that there are criteria that we have to take into consideration until we get a system that is more equitable.
So I think that's exactly what I was, that, that's my next question. So, we have, uh, if, if the current criteria is okay and then, um, there was another recommendation that had to do with, um, evaluating the schools and all of that. And then that, that recommendation jumped to, if you evaluate your schools more, you'll have more students apply. And I didn't really catch that jump, but I am more concerned about the things that you're bringing up, which are, how do we actually get children of color or underserved children and their parents to know about these programs and apply for these programs? That's the real issue here. How do we get students to do that? And I, and I didn't, excuse me, just a second. I didn't see that in this report and I, I know that you guys might have talked about it, so ways to actually engage those families and get them to think about an option or a transfer would be really helpful, I think, for us.
You know, you almost answered your question yourself when you talked about how you got, how your child got into a, a, a school. Uh, and that's part of what our discussion was about, was there was nothing, we have nothing that validates how the people, uh, apply for the, why they apply for the lottery and, and wind up where they go. But the petition, the hardship petition process does have some, uh, uh, information that comes with people sharing why they're making a request for that. That's part of why we came to that conclusion that that would be a, a good way to go. But the other value of it, if we always have to look at the short and the long, the other value of knowing why people make a request to go someplace else is a, an opportunity for growth and, and strengthening of our schools. Because if you find that there is an issue of disparate disciplinary action, uh, uh, people not caring, we had the mother tonight talk about how her child disappeared from a school and, and nobody knew how that happened. Uh, if, if that weren't happening enough and it became a red flag, you begin to work on how to resolve that, how to, to make your schools better. And it wouldn't just be that one school, it would be all of the schools. And that, that's how we, we waited that, to think that having real knowledge of why people leave a school or choose to go to another school could be a growth opportunity for the district.
Certainly, certainly it could, but I'm also interested in how you get people to have more knowledge about our options and what the process is to actually go there.
So I think we left a lot unrecommended in terms of implementation particularly. Uh, we talked a lot about the importance of marketing and outreach.
Right.
And the double-edged sword that that is, uh, because whenever you're marketing for kids, you're taking them from somewhere.
Right.
So we didn't solve that problem, but we know that outreach and marketing are critical to, um, equalizing access to focus option schools. So we also talked about issues about transportation, after-school, before-school care, you know, there are all kinds of issues that, uh, create barriers before an application ever happens. So we talked about lots of those, we didn't get into recommending implementation.
Well, thank you very much to all of you who answered my question.
Can I just piggyback as well, just to build on that, in terms of the, the piece around the petition, um, process, a couple of other pieces I heard in your discussions and, and working with staff, um, the piece of the, the, the feedback loop so that the enrollment and transfer isn't sort of working in a, in a silo or a vacuum, but there is that established, it's part of the district's culture and processes that you do have that because we don't have that right now? And then also making sure that the enrollment and transfer staff is supported and has the capacity to work with a culturally response, in a responsive way, um, and really transform how they work with families. So those were a couple of pieces that were really important.
You reminded me of my other question.
Okay.
Did anybody do any budget analysis on this at all? No? Okay, that's fine.
I think that's...
It's all right.
That's all right.
That's our job, we, we understand.
Well, and this is part of what I'm saying, um, the 18th, I'll come back with a timeline of how we tackle this because there are a huge number of operations, how do you operationalize all of these? And some of, numbers of them will be things that become part of the budget process, um, like where do you need different people to, and, and systems to implement some of these? Anyway, so this is part of what the staff is now doing that will inform recommendations and, and sequencing, um, of recommendations. And not all of them are policy, some of them are policy, some are really how do we resource and over what period of time, so that there, it's a combination of, um, the package.
Others? Others out there? No? Great. Well, thank you all for your work. I know it's been a long process and we appreciate the, the work that you did.
And actually, I'm going to say thank you again for your work and also you're, you're getting a break, but you're not done. So just to be, no, I'm serious, like, so this has been, there may be some other moment where in, uh, implementation, we need to call you back together to do more dialogue about what this is. And this is intentionally sequenced with the whole, um, boundary review, um, that this policy is first, but it, it directly interacts with whatever, how we're approaching the boundary review. And we're looking at, uh, having members of SACIT also be part of the district, um, boundary review, DBRAC, the District Boundary Review Advisory Committee. So, um, there will be a, a combination of people who serve on that, on that group so that we benefit from the expertise gained in the SACIT process. So you guys, thank you so much and thanks for coming tonight to do the presentation.
And I'll also say thank you to everybody from Richmond and the other schools who showed up tonight to voice your opinions too. So thank you, to everybody. Okay, our next, uh, agenda item is an update on our achievement compacts. At our October 14th, I wonder if I should wait a minute? I'll, I'll just wait a few minutes to see if the crowd, um, goes down. We'll take, we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we'll call us back to order again. And our next agenda item is an update on our achievement compacts. Uh, as our viewers will probably remember, at October 14th, board meeting, the board declined to set targets in three of the seven categories, the achievement compact that utilizes smarter balanced testing. We did this after considering the recommendation of our achievement compact advisory committee and until we had received baseline data and evidence that the assessment is reliable, valid, and free from cultural, linguistic, and socioeconomic bias as was in our board resolution 4943. After receiving a letter from the Department of Education and the Chief Education Officer, both of them, stating that we must supply targets, the board will consider an additional resolution tonight. Staff prepared a memo offering four options for setting targets. The first, that we use the Oakes data to set targets and employ the methodology that we used in the past. The second, to set these three targets at 100% to indicate our strong belief that all students can achieve. The third, Deputy Superintendent Rob Saxton has stated that he believes approximately 35 to 40% of Oregon students will pass the smarter balanced assessment in this first year, so we could use that as our target. Fourth, we could continue to decline to set targets and ask that OEIB just pick them for us. Staff has prepared an achievement compact to have 100% of, a resolution for the achievement compact to have 100% of each of the three targets, third grade reading, fifth grade math, uh, fifth grade math and eighth grade math. So you have that resolution in front of you?
Um, just to clarify, the resolution actually is, just adopts the achievement compact?
Yes.
Or does the achievement compact pass the numbers which...
Correct, right. Sorry. Everybody clear on that?
No, I missed that.
So the achieve, the resolution actually just says we accept the achievement compact and the achievement compact that's in your packet.
Yeah.
Actually has 100% right now.
Got it.
Set as an aspirational goal, um, and following our belief that all students can achieve. So, the board will now consider resolution 4986, resolution to amend Port and Public Schools' achievement compact targets. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Atkins moves and Director Morton seconds the motion to adopt resolution 4986. Ms. Houston, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one, Margie Brown.
Great. Margie, you're familiar with our rules about public comment, correct? Yes, I know you've been here many times. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Margie Brown, B-R-O-W-N, and, uh, so Board Chair Knowles, the School Board and Superintendent Smith. I encourage you to set reasonable annual targets for the three smarter balanced benchmarks as recommended by the state by using the Oakes score as a temporary proxy. We realize that, that likely inaccuracy from translating one test method to another that presents a difficulty in setting targets when baseline data is not available. However, we think presenting stretched targets shows the board wants improvement. This would not preclude you from voicing your concerns about technical hurdles related to student skill development and the district's computer infrastructure as well as the issue of tests being given only in English. There is much to be done to prepare teachers and students for the smarter balanced transition, but for the sake of our students, I hope the district can work productively with the state to make the transition as smooth as possible, realizing that none of this is going to be easy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have the same hope. Whoops, I also have to sneeze. Okay.
Tissues at the ready.
Okay, so, um, is there board discussion on the resolution?
Round discussion.
Director Buell, welcome back.
Thank you. It's nice to be back.
It's nice to be back. There's been a lot of discussion surrounding our achievement compact committee recommending we put no percentages under where we expect to improve in third grade reading, fifth grade math, and eighth grade math. Both Nancy Golden, the head of the governor's educational investment advisory board, and the deputy superintendent of education and head of ODE, Rob Saxton, have sent us letters saying we need to set those percentages to meet state law. That's not necessary, that's not the case. For one thing, Nancy Golden has no authority whatsoever, she's the head of an advisory committee for the, for the governor, she has no authority over our school system to come out and tell us to do anything. And so, that's one thing. And the other thing is, if you read carefully, which I've pulled up, it says that we are to develop plans for achieving the outcomes, measures of progress, goals, and targets expressed in an achievement compact, including methods of assessing and reporting progress for the achievement of goals and targets. They haven't kind of, they haven't asked us for that, second part, but that's basically what it says. And it didn't say anything about that you have to set percentages on each of the things. The fact that we have some goals set in some things, we met the law. I believe we need, I believe we should set the percentages in order to comply with, not the law, which is what I originally had written, until I take a look at it, to comply with Oregon Department of Education has asked us to set those targets. So we should set some percentages for them, just to comply with their interpretation of the law. It's not really the law, we're complying with the law, their interpretation is different. I believe we, I believe that as a government body, we should comply with what we're asked to do by the Oregon Department of Education. But I want to make some comments before recommending a path for us to follow. First, we need to review what our responsibilities are as a government body. It is our responsibility to attempt to make sure children in our district receive the best education we can offer them. All children, no matter their circumstances, their ethnicity, their economic background, or any other particulars in their lives, all children. It's this responsibility which doesn't mesh with the government actions taken recently by our state department of education. They have set forth, based on a national agenda, a form of education which doesn't take into account all children, but instead is based on the needs of particular adults, whether they be economic, career, or status needs. Decisions which should be made based on children's needs have instead been made to further political and economic agendas. Their approach, however, has been implemented under the guise that it is good for children, and they wish to solve educational problems which usually revolve around teacher criticism or a lack of national will. Both are false narratives which benefit the adults and not children. Children who are behind, who are behind need help to catch up. Children who are ahead need to have their horizons broadened. And all children need to be in a solid school environment which creates a strong foundation in not just academics, but other important values, which include tolerance, appreciation for the earth, and appreciation for the arts, and understanding of history, present day and future skills which translate into success in both society and the workforce, and a path to the pursuit of happiness. In order to have faith in the people who are leading our education establishment, we need to have them make decisions they can justify and connect to what is good for our children and our children's education. That is a rub in this matter concerning our achievement compact, where the state is asking for something which doesn't exist. A number which we predict for a test which we have never seen, which has no relevance to anything we have ever done, which is at best a guess and at worst a lie. By saying no, we are standing up for the children whose education we have been entrusted, and at the same time, telling the state department that their role is critical to the best interests of Oregon and its children, and that we are not going to support them in a process which is built on a mirage, creating fantasy numbers with no meaning, and which deludes the citizens who have entrusted both us and them with this important responsibility. So if we do need to set numbers, I'm willing to put forth a process, but I kind of liked the 100%. My process was that I brought, and I thought we should have the same process in place as the other 196 districts did, and I brought from home the...
A duck cup.
I brought from home, yeah, a duck cup, because college is career ready. And I have a, I have a, some people don't know this, I have a dice collection, and this is a 100-sided die. So I figured what we could do, if we didn't come up with a better thing, was I'd just shake it up, and so third, this is what the other districts did, third grade reading would be a rollout, it's hard to read these, it would be, geez, 67%. But I'm willing to go, I like the 100%, I think it's fine, I'm certainly willing to support it, even though I kind of like, the same as the other districts did, just guess at it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Well said. Director Blahle.
First, I want to thank Director Buell for showing me for the first time ever a 100-sided die. Wow, I didn't know they made it.
My favorite is actually 34-sided. It's pretty good.
But I just, I just want to note, as we, as we go through this, this is more of a comment than a question, just when we, when we refuse to set these, there are lots of reasons why we refuse to set these. But in particular, if we're looking to data to make informed decisions, when we don't have data to do it, as Director Buell just pointed out, we're just really guessing. And now, we can, we can, we can guess, and we will guess, I'm guessing. See how guessing gets? But it's really just a guess, and this sets actually the wrong tone, I think that what we're trying to say, what we're, what I hear the message from our state department is saying is, well, when you don't know, just make it up, and we'll figure it out later. And that, to me, is a message that for too long has gone on in education, about just saying, well, just keep doing what you're doing, or keep making it up, and we'll figure something out later. And that, to me, sets it, not a, well, in some ways, a dangerous precedent, because these are students' lives. But what's interesting is, I was in a discussion the other day about attendance, chronic absence attendance, and somebody made a comment saying, well, I think the state's published all the state attendance for chronic absence. And somebody made the comment like, well, the state wouldn't publish the data if it wasn't accurate. But it turns out, the state has published inaccurate chronic attendance data. And so, it begins to draw into question the reliability, both of our institution, but also the institution of our state government, which is unfortunate, because our state's number one goal is the education of our children, it's their number one responsibility dedicated to states. And to begin to make this up, or to put forth numbers as if they're accurate when we know for a fact that they are not accurate, that is a, that's a disappointment at least. It's a disservice, and perhaps it's, it's larger than that. So, we'll go forth, because there's no doubt that I believe 100% of our students can, will, and should perform on these assessments, not without the reinvestment. In fact, I think the OEIB looked at some numbers today, and they said to get 95% of our kids to 100% reading, we'd have to invest this amount of money, it was something like $400 million. So that's not even 100%. So the state itself is acknowledging that they are not investing, nor do they plan to invest what it takes to get all of our students there. And yet, we play what I will consider a game, to pick these numbers. But I truly believe 100% of our kids can, should, and will perform on this, and it's our job to figure out how to get them there, but it's our state's job to figure out the funding for it, and to help us get there.
Director Atkins?
Yeah, no, I'm just connecting that, and just say, you know, I really want to focus our efforts not on this number or this, this particular report, but on helping make sure that all our children are reading, and graduating, and everything else that we want for our kids in the district. So that's, that's what my focus is. I think the 100% is, as, you know, because it does reflect our actual aspiration and our belief in all our students, is appropriate in this instance. And, yeah, and I think that the investment piece is the one that, that's, that's where the focus needs to be. And, and just us getting back to the work of actually, you know, being in our schools and helping our teachers and our students and our families make this challenging transition, while we're really focusing on learning and the joy of learning for our kids, and that's what we want.
Ma'am?
Yeah, like, I believe that we, I believe that 100% of our students should, can succeed, but however, like, those tests aren't set up for 100% of students to succeed. So what's going to happen is that they're not going to, and then it's going to look like our students failed, which, it shouldn't look like that, it's not their fault that they're not meeting 100%. I personally think we should still stick from not having any, just because that's showing, like, what we believed last month is still what we believe this month, and I stand firm that that's a great thing to put out there, and just say that, like, we don't believe in this. And then, I do understand that the government, if they want to put numbers, that's fine, but as a district, I think we should say that it isn't fair to put any numbers to this when we just don't know yet, so.
I hear what you're saying. I think, though, that we don't know, for them to make the decision for us doesn't feel right to me, because based on the guidance that we've given, been given, that it should be keyed to the Oaks, or maybe not, and that there actually won't be any consequences anyway. I mean, it's just, to me, it should be a decision that we make, but I totally hear what you're saying, and I feel like, given the context, we just go with the aspiration and state what our goal is for our kids. And when I'm putting the 100%, I'm talking about the ultimate goal of learning and reading and graduating and succeeding, not so much the test. That's, that's what I want to move on from this and focus on.
Yep.
And again, just to be clear, as we've said all along, we're not against assessment, it just needs to be done appropriately, and in the right way, and in the, in the right, right amount. And we're working on that as a district, and this is a huge piece that's been laid on top that we need to grapple with, the whole state needs to grapple with. And as Margie said, we need to work together with the state to make this transition as smooth as possible, but we need support and resources and the recognition that it's a transition, it's a huge one.
Director Morton?
When I was a, when I was a kid, my dad was a big boxing fan, and one of the things I remember from that time of watching these heavyweight fights was never leave it to a decision, and never let someone else determine the outcome of your effort. And although we don't know in this case, I think we can, we can make an important, an important statement, saying just what I've heard my colleagues say, what I said several weeks ago when we looked at this initially, is that we believe every student in our district can achieve. And I hope that we have our community, I hope that we have our teachers, I hope that we have those within OEIB, within ODE, who believe the same, that in fact, every student in our district can achieve. I feel like being really aspirational right now.
Anybody else? No? Well, I, I think I already said, good job, Steve, so I'm, obviously, I liked all the things that you said, as, as I also appreciated Director Blahle's comments. And like my colleagues, I am not prepared to let the state do this for us. And there have been many times when I've talked about different testing, or other kinds of things that we've done with our students that require us meeting a goal, and I think I slipped one time and said 95% of students are, that was back in the very beginning, but I don't think we can set any other goal for our students other than 100%. And I just have to, I have to go from the heart, and I truly believe that 100% of our students can achieve and will achieve, especially if we continue to work together, the district, our teachers, our parents, our community organizations, we, we can make sure that all of our students achieve. And so I am fully in support of using 100% aspirational goal as our goal for the achievement compacts, so. Any last?
Yeah, and I agree that 100% of students can succeed as well, but just on this one test, like, I don't think that's what's going to happen, because ultimately, the power, like, of what's, the numbers are going to be, aren't, isn't in our hands, so we should just make a statement about it, rather than try and play the guessing game and assign some number. And even saying 100% of students is just going to come back and look, like, make the students look like they didn't achieve something, which they are achieving every day in the classroom, so I just don't think that we should set that number.
Thank you. Others? Anybody else? Okay. I think I lost my sheet here. What number are we? Okay. The board will now consider, that's not right. 4986? Yeah. We've moved to the top. The board will now vote on resolution 4986. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 4986 is approved by a vote of six to zero with student representative Jaswal voting.
No.
No, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the business agenda. We'll now consider the remaining items on the business agenda, having already voted on 4985 and 4986. Ms. Houston, are there any changes? No. So I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda.
So move?
Second. Director Blahle moves, and Director Buell seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment? There is not. Okay. Is there any board discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
On, are we all the way through 4984 as part of what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Educational Northwest provides support to principals in school, teams to the development and implementation of comprehensive achievement plans. Boise, Elliott, Humboldt, Roosevelt, George, James, Jordan, Kelly, and Harrison Park. What, what does this look like? What, I mean, what is this buying, actually?
So this is, the state does their assessment of focus and priority schools every four years. This covers the schools that would have fallen in that category if they did that designation every year, and it provides the same level of support for the comprehensive plan that we give to the schools that are designated as focus and priority schools. And Ed Northwest is the entity that hires our coaches, that, that we utilize, we contract with.
So this basically pays for coaches to connect to these schools?
To the schools, yes, correct.
To resegregate that, please. And then the second one is the Center for Intercultural Organizing, $1.7 million to create infrastructure for GEAR Up, mobilizing for college development and implement building undergraduates through inclusive leadership development, the Build program. Could you explain what that is?
Could I ask you to hold up just a minute, Steve? What was the one you were?
This one right here. And 4984, this section, Education Northwest.
PS 161308.
Yeah, PS 61308. And then the next one, I'm going to probably...
Okay, so let's, let's do one at a time. You kind of jumped ahead of me there. So we need, so this is a motion, do you want to go ahead and make the motion?
For an amendment, you mean?
To set it apart for separate vote.
Oh, okay, yes. Move to set aside PS 61308, Education Northwest, decide for a separate vote.
A second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Okay, is there any discussion about that? Nope. Okay, all those in favor of setting aside P, PS 61308? Say aye.
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 Okay, all opposed? Okay, so we'll set that one aside. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
So that's going to be...
My colleagues, even if you don't know, I appreciate you doing that. And then the other one is to Center for Intercultural Organizing. I'm not sure what the Build movement, actually, $1.7 million is a lot of money, I just kind of like to know where it's going. Is this out of our funds?
No, it's part of a, it's a seven-year contract with this partner that's part of a GEAR Up grant, so it's...
So we're just spending grant money?
It's GEAR Up grant money, yeah.
Okay, pop back to the last one then, to, then, if you would, the PS, the one right above it, is that grant money too?
No, it's where we are adding services that, yeah.
The 1.7, that, that doesn't come out of our budget, it comes out of a grant.
It's GEAR Up grant, right.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I don't need to set that aside then.
Is that it?
I believe it is.
Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
Which part of the voting?
Everything else.
Okay.
Except the one you said. Hang on one second, on the Ed Northwest, I'm getting clarity about whether that's actually grant funding.
PSU.
The funding source. Ed Northwest?
No, no, it's not.
It's not, it's general fund, the ones that were designated and have the four-year designation were getting money for, the ones, these that have been added later, we're adding because they would have qualified and we're giving them the same level of support. And it's general fund.
Title funds.
Title funds, but it still is money we have discretion about how we use it. Okay, yes. But we're trying to provide consistent levels of support for schools in the same situation. Yes.
Okay, the vote will now vote, excuse me, the, I think we, did we vote? The board has passed. All right. All right, so, sorry. Now, the board will consider for resolution, or the 4988, which is Education Northwest, Personal Services Contract, which has been set aside by Director Buell. All those in favor of?
Discussion?
Well, we had discussion.
But none of theirs.
Okay. Discussion, board discussion. Anybody?
I have a, I want to go back and clarify the question. So, this is stuff that we're, this is basically, what we're saying is that these used to be focus and priority schools?
No.
And now?
No, the, so, the state identifies the lower, lowest five and the lowest 15%.
Right, right.
Right. But they give that designation for four years. So, these schools would have hit that same, if, if they identified and named focus and priority schools every year, these schools would also be in that category. So, but they don't. So, we just have, we have the group that was formally named, but that, they hold that designation for four years. These schools, because they have the same criteria fit, we're providing them the same level of support that focus and priority schools get.
The same level of support or the same support?
The same, the same coaching support that the others get, so...
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Coaching support specifically.
Yeah, my problem is I'm more, less coaches and more teachers, so I'll vote against this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion of 4988? Okay, the board will now vote on resolution 4988. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes?